Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is Friday, May 15th, 2020. It's approximately 9:30 a.m. Before we begin, if you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the new public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so conflict of interest statement. This is where I ask if any member, city manager, city staff, or city council has any known conflict of interest on any item on the agenda?
None.
None, Mayor?
None.
Saying none, so we have two updates. The first one is going to be the Department of Health discussion. And with us, we have, I believe, Dr. Michael Landen, Dave Morgan, and Don Sanchez. So I don't know who's going to start off of the three. But thank you very much for appearing and sharing with us some information.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Right now, I believe you have Don Sanchez, our Southwest Region Director, and then me, the Media and Social Media Director for the Department of Health. Still waiting on Dr. Landen. But what I can tell you is that the new public health orders are in the midst of being finalized. They will go out today. They obviously will go into effect tomorrow. And with that, it comes what may not feel like a big change for some, but is certainly a game changer for the extent to which that we are opening up business and opening up the opportunity for people to go out, to take care of business. And we're going to see how that potentially affects case count, not just here in Las Cruces and Doñana County, but statewide. This is going to be a learn-as-we-go lesson.
Thanks, Dave. You know, what we can do is we can go to the next item, Public Service Announcements, and then we can circle back when Dr. Landen comes in.
Let's do that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and go to the Public Service Announcements discussion.
If I may, I just admitted Dr. Landen.
Oh, he did? Oh, great, thanks, David. Just in the nick of time. So, Dr. Landen, are you with us? Hello, Dr. Landen? Calling Dr. Landen.
I don't know, I'm trying to answer his phone. He called it on.
Yeah, so I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning, Dr. Landen.
Yeah, I apologize for being late. I'm sorry about that.
No problem. We instituted a $20 fine before we got on, so we'll just leave that. Just kidding. Thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate all the information you've brought, ready to share with us. And Dave Morgan kind of gave us a little opener to expect the order from the governor later today. So we'll turn it over to you for your presentation.
Great. And I received your all's plan for opening up the parks. And I'm prepared to talk about that. I can also talk about other things if you want, how we're doing with cases, that sort of thing. Or do you want me to focus on opening up the parks? Is that what you'd like me to do?
I'm sure. You're welcome to share that with you. I know I, for one, am interested in the transmission rate as to how that's looking. Has it been going up? Has it been coming down? What is it currently sitting at right now? That's what I'd be interested in. But whatever you have as far as your presentation, please feel free to share with us.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and just do a little overview of the data and then maybe get into the parks proposal. So, you know, it appears, we've really been focused on the Northwest. It appears that their case rates are starting, or case numbers are starting to drop. The rest of the state is sort of at a plateau or partly dropping. But in the state as a whole, looks like the numbers are starting to drop. We're not going to make any grand conclusions about that because we've already been burned by that with COVID in the past. So we have to basically be really careful about concluding that we're clearly moving in the right direction or not. So that's the state perspective. In terms of how New Mexico's doing, in terms of case rates by county, unfortunately, Doñana County's case rate is one of the counties that continues to increase. And, for example, well, right now, we're at about 120, which is below the U.S. rate. And U.S. rate's much higher largely because of the Northwest. So Doñana County's inching up there to be, have a rate that's similar to the New Mexico rate.
Dr. Landen, would you happen to have the transmission rate currently?
The one that we're, the transmission rate that we're using right now is 1.33. So that's above the 1.15 transmission rate. So basically, what does 1.33 mean? It basically means that for every case, we feel there's transmission to one and a third additional cases. So that basically means that the transmission will continue, growth will continue when that occurs. If the transmission rate or the R effective was below one, then that would mean each case is not replacing itself fully. We're having less than one additional case for each case, which means the growth will be substantially slowing. So the other transmission rates in the state are, for the entire state, we're at about 1.15, which is sort of, which was our target, to get there and below. In the central area, it's 1.09. Southeast is 1.12. Northeast is 1.05. The Northwest is 1.2, and the Southwest is 1.3. And the Southwest is 1.3 largely because of Southern Doñana County.
Can I interrupt you for just a quick second, Dr.? I apologize. I guess I must have been of the wrong assumption that the transmission rate was the number of cases divided by the number of people that have been actually tested. And so that's not...
That's the positivity rate.
Positivity rate, okay.
That's the test positivity rate. So that is, that's not really one of our criteria. It's an important thing to keep an eye on. And, you know, the, and we're looking, for the Southeast region, you guys are doing fine on that. Below 4%, that's looking pretty good. Whereas in the Northwest, they're about around 16%, 15%. That just means that out of, you know, out of 100 tests, what percentage of those tests will be positive? In your area, it's less than four, that's good.
Actually, our area is 2.9. So...
That's correct.
Yeah, I did the entire state because I was waiting for that from, I got a call from the governor's office yesterday, and they were supposed to send me the transmit, what I thought was the transmission rate. Okay, you know, because I asked them, I said, well, how do you find that? Well, cases divided by number tested. So I just took it for that. So I actually have almost every county here. And we're below Burn Leo County, we're below Sandoval County, we're below all the Northwest counties. We're a little bit just above Valencia County, and we're still below Socorro County, Torrance County, Guadalupe County.
That's not the indicator of growth.
No, I got you.
And depending on what time period you select, you'll get a different positivity rate. So I'm sure your period's right, my period's right. It was just different time periods.
I just did it yesterday. I did it last night. So I took whatever was on the state's website, and I went through every county.
Okay, very good, very good. So what do we need to do to reduce the Southwest and Doñana County transmission rate, the R effective? We basically need to, it looks like we need to reduce the number of cases in the southern part of Doñana County primarily. That seems to be the primary issue. Now, you are, in your R effective, you are affected by the large number of cases that are at the Otero County Processing Center. That's a large number of cases. So that's, that's part of the challenge here for the Southwest in bringing down the reproductive rate. Also, part of that was the Stampede meat processing outbreak. All those things are very important. I mean, actually, when we take those two things out of the, what we call the Epi-Curve, which is the number of cases per day, and you can sort of see whether things are going up or down, the Southwest, you know, it's been going up, but it's definitely not going up as much as reflected in the R effective of 1.33. So we're focused on, you know, folks are doing increasing testing, particularly in Southern Doñana County, to try to, you know, basically isolate and quarantine around all those, around those cases, and bring down the R effective. Social distancing, continuing that's going to be very important in keeping that down. And that's sort of, you know, that's sort of a summary of some of the data. Do you guys want to go to questions about that? And then hold off on the parks discussion? Or...
Yeah, let me let my colleagues ask questions. But can you clarify one more time? What is the, how do you find the transmission rate? Because you said ours was about 1.33. How do you, what is the formula for that?
Well, the formula is actually relatively complex. But what it, but what it represents is the number of new cases emerging from a case. So the goal is to get it below one, which means that things will slow down. And if we're below one ultimately, then each, each case that currently exists is replaced with less than a case. So over time, the cases just basically fade away if we keep it going in that direction. With a 1.33 for each case, there's 1.3 cases. So the case count keeps climbing.
Doctor, do you know if that 1.33 factors in the two things that you had just mentioned, Stampede and the Otero County detention facility?
Yes, that you all are, that's, it's in your region, and we're counting those in your region.
Did you by any chance do it without it?
No, we did not. We did not do it without them.
Okay, I got you. Okay, we have a question from Counselor Stuvey.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Landen. Yes, I had a couple of questions clarifying that transmission rate for us in regards to other parts of the Southern Doñana. Has there been any independent work, Los Cruces itself, on, beyond those transmission rates? Any other statistics that have done, been done primarily just for Los Cruces at this point?
We have, yeah, I mean, there's, there's some done, like Los Alamos has done some. Let me find that. In terms of different ways of looking at growth, so the growth, the growth rate by county, let's see, for Doñana County is 6%. For Otero is 15%, which includes the, you know, they're including the Otero processing cases in Otero County. And if we're all other counties in the region, they're much below that. I mean, Catrin was at 13%, but that was just because of one case. So it's really, Doñana County and Otero County are really contributing to the growth, daily growth in cases. And so Doñana County has a 6% daily growth in cases, and Otero County has a 15%. So that's a, that's a different type of measure. But it, it is, the R effective, the reproductive rate, the transmission rate is, you know, similar in a way. So that's, that's a specific Doñana County measure.
Thank you. And you mentioned that we had two really big areas, the meatpacking plant and the Otero County Processing Center, that you could pinpoint those kind of larger outbreaks. Are we seeing any of those types of outbreaks here in Los Cruces? Or are they mostly in the southern part of the county?
You know, my sense in looking at the rate is that it's largely in the southern part of the county. You guys are in Las Cruces, things are looking, still looking relatively, relatively quiet. And that's why we are really focusing on the southern part of the county. Yeah, the, the rates, the number of cases, the case counts, last seven days, last 30 days, are particularly high in the southern part of the county. Sunland Park, Anthony, South Valley, those are the areas with the high rates in the county.
Okay. And then are, because we are connected and everything, what types of measures and planning are we doing in those southern areas to make sure that we don't have more spread in other parts of Doñana and here in Los Cruces?
You know, that's, I mean, that's a, that's a good question. I mean, what we're trying to do is really, I mean, the testing is critically important, and we're focusing some testing in Sunland Park. We are trying to be as aggressive as we can around the case investigations and the contact tracing for those counties. We're working, I mean, you've got a lot of cases, I mean, like, two-thirds of the cases for Stampede, the Stampede outbreak, they were among residents of Texas who worked at Stampede. And so we're, we're working very closely, and a few lived in Juarez. We're working very closely with those health departments to make sure that cases that have worked in New Mexico, that we know about all their contacts and that sort of thing. So we're doing all those things. I mean, what we really, we probably need to step up. And we've had a lot of what are called sort of Paso de Norte efforts, where there, there's a public health collaboration between Doñana County, El Paso, and Juarez. We really need, you know, I think we've been, I mean, some of that's going on, but I think we can do more of that. And I think we'll need to do more of that to sort of view it as a common, a common issue. Cases in Doñana County, Southern Doñana County are an issue for El Paso and vice versa. So we really need to pick up some of our efforts along those lines.
Okay. Mike, sorry, Counselor Stuvey, Mr. Mayor, Mike, this is Don. I just wanted to mention real quickly that we had a conversation with La Clinica de Familia this week, and they're interested in helping with testing. So we're going to work with them this coming week to get them set up for testing too at their sites, you know, in the southern part of the county, as long as helping with some of the events that we have going on. Just wanted to let you know that. So we are increasing the testing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that was, for the record, Don Sanchez from the Department of Health.
And thank you. I actually have quite a few questions regarding that increased testing. With the new kind of message from the governor's office that everybody can get tested, you know, that that puts a lot of strain on your department and those departments that have been testing and doing this. At the very beginning, when we all talked, we had your department doing testing by appointment. And then we had the drive-through clinic that was stationed at MMC. What other areas alongside those are we going to increase to allow for that, to be able to provide that service when we say everybody can get tested? So what, what plans do we have in place for that?
So, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Stuvey, I can, like I just mentioned, we reached out to our partners with La Clinica to assist. So that's going to be a huge help for us.
Excuse me, Don? Can I, can I get you to identify yourself, please? Because unfortunately, it doesn't even have your name on it, it just has your phone number.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So this is Don Sanchez, Southwest Region Director here in Las Cruces for Public Health. Just briefly, we are, like I mentioned, we're working with La Clinica. They're going to work with us this coming week to stand up testing at their facilities. We've also started partnering with the county with their resource centers in the southern part of the state to do some events when they have some of their food distribution at some of their county resource centers. We are going to open up a testing site come May 22nd at Sunland Park Casino to kind of really focus in on that area and some of the employees there with that facility. So we have several events coming up over the next two weeks to increase the access and opportunity for anyone to come get tested. We still have our, you know, appointment-based testing in our offices, but literally people just walk in and show up, and we test them. So it's not necessarily just tied to being appointment-based. I think we had 26 on our schedule yesterday morning, and we had, we saw like 56 in the morning. They just are showing up. So I think that the message is out there to just come over and get tested. We are, it is a lot because we are also having to respond to do testing at Stampede and the ICE Detention Center, so that also attacks some of our staff. So we're happy to have La Clinica coming on board. The National Guard is also helping, sending some medics down here. We have some medics working with us too to help provide some extra support. We also reached out to by Pamela Angel with the Community of Hope, if they can provide some additional testing. So we're, we're trying to beef up, I think, those other partners that can do some additional testing as well and that outreach alongside us. Thank you.
Boy, will you still be providing the drive-through clinic at MMC still? Will that also be still available?
Yes, my understanding that is still available, yes.
Are you providing the resources for that, or is that privately done?
No, we provide them through our state lab as well, and we help coordinate. If they are short on resources, we see what we have and we share with them. So we're in communication with them daily to make sure that they can continue to do their stand-up drive-through. They see close to 200 people a day in their drive-through at MMC.
Okay. And one of the things with that, I know that they had even some of the equipment from the tent rentals. That's all due to be returned on the 20th. Have we extended any of the, whatever, if it's a lease or anything, to make sure that that setup is still secure for as long as it's necessary?
So Counselor Stuvey, I can follow up with you on that? That's coming out of one of our bureaus. Let me follow up on that and make sure that we can secure that on a continual basis. Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you. And you've given about 200 to 250 of those test kits probably a day. Is that the capacity to be able to test that facility?
Counselor Stuvey, did you mean at MMC specifically?
Yes.
They're, yeah, they're running, I think their, their numbers are about, between 150, probably 250 and 200 a day.
Okay. How many has your sites been able to accommodate thus far?
And Counselor Stuvey, our site here in Los Cruces, it, you know, it varies. If we have a drive-through site, we can do 150. We've done up to 350. Our normal day with appointments, it's typically about 60 to 70, potentially more.
And with the new partnerships that we have, what do you think might be, or what is the target range that you guys are going for? To have your, like, max-capacity testing in our community per day?
Counselor Stuvey, that's a good question. I mean, we're trying to hit, you know, we would like to get, I would hope we can hit close to, with all the partners involved, maybe 500 tests a day or more. I mean, we're trying, I, we don't have a quite, I think we're working with the clinic, obviously, to see how many clinics they will be able to set up, the number of staff that they have, et cetera. So that's, we haven't quite guesstimated on that. But I think we're, we're going to shoot for, you know, as many as we can get. So I can definitely, once we've settled with La Clinica, we can follow up with that. But I think comfortably, hopefully, at least 500 a day.
Thank you. And that would be for the whole county then?
Correct.
Okay. So, and I'm glad of that number because as we move forward, as we're, at the very beginning, you talked about when our surge and peak is, and we're sort of hitting that time. I just want to make sure that we have all the resources available for us to be able to test. And with that notion that everybody can get tested, if we do have limitations of only 500 a day for our county, which is pretty widespread, I just want to make sure that we are able to work with those partnerships. And if we need to ask at the state level to bring in more resources, that we can be doing it, especially if we do have some sort of, you know, kind of outbreak spots in our southern region too. You know, if we, we have that notion that everybody can get tested, I really just want to make sure that we're able to follow through on that in all the different ways. And there's always going to be a capacity of some sort. But just to make sure that, you know, we are still fairly large. So if we had everybody wanting to come in all at once to get tested, even smaller bits, you know, 500, it's quite a bit, but divided throughout the county, it may not be enough if we had really big hotspots in certain areas. One of the questions that I had was that of that surge and peak. Are we still on track for those original numbers that we had? Are we, I was going to get our peak at, before it was, May 25th was sort of the time that was kind of projected. Are we still on track with that? And are numbers that we are seeing both, are they in line with what we were expecting with that surge and peak?
You know, that's all based on modeling. And modeling is a guess. It's an estimate. It's a, it's an educated guess, but it's based on different parameters and putting in data. And the modeling, the most recent peak for the New Mexico model was, you know, about May 18th. And, you know, that, that changes based on the different data that comes in. Los Alamos, which is doing models nationally, they're on the CDC website, their, their models are there as well. Los Alamos has predicted that there's an 88% chance that the state has already seen its highest number of cases. So that's, that's sort of a, that's sort of a very practical definition of a peak. And that's, and that would be for the first wave that we're talking about. So, but again, you know, I think, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we announced that we had plateaued, which, you know, we had, but then it went back up again. So I think we have to just be very careful and give it some time. It's not an exact science with a new virus like COVID-19 to, once the rates start going down, they'll keep going down. There, that's not an exact, that's not, that, there's not a scientific basis for knowing that that's going to happen. The models are also emphasizing, and these are models, and these are estimates, the models are also emphasizing that the, with hope, with people moving around more, social distancing decreasing, more people at work, that that's going to, that's going to increase the case counts. So that's a, that's... So that's a, that's a consistent estimate that's coming from pretty much all the models. That when you, when people move around more, reduce social distancing, case counts are, are, it's, 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 it's predicted that they will go up based on the models. So we have, we have the case information, which is appearing to start going down. And then we have the modeling information, which is saying, well, there's a lot of activity, people are moving around, social distancing is decreasing. Case counts are going to go up. So you, you have sort of those two things to wrestle with. So this is modeling. It's not definitive. It's an estimate. The case counts are the definitive part of this. And they're starting to, and they're starting to, to, to decrease. And based on Los Alamos's, look at the numbers, they have, they've concluded that there's an 88% chance that we've already hit, hit the highest case count total, daily case count total for this first wave.
Thank you. And then one of my final questions before I turn it over to my colleagues. I've been a strong advocate for us being able to do test processing here in Las Cruces. Is that, and I know there's been talks about working with partnerships, is that something that we are doing now? And thinking long-term that, you know, we are living with COVID for, you know, quite a while now. It's in our environment. What steps are we doing to make sure that we have those capabilities here in the southern part of the state? And that we don't have to send out our kits either up north even, I know some places had to send their kits out of state to get processed?
Dawn, do you want to, would you like to talk about that in terms of the capacity locally?
Um, you know, I'll, I'm sorry, this is Dawn Sanchez, Southwest Region Director. Councilor Stube, Mr. Mayor. I, I just know that there was, they were in communication with, I think our ERD, Mike, was it with ERD? In communication with the biomedical lab at NMSU to potentially be a site for lab testing. But I have not seen anything recent on that development.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm aware of, I'm aware of some communications along those lines. But yeah, I think that might have been our state lab in communication with them, but.
Okay.
And if I, if I may share this, and I, I think I mentioned, I may not have mentioned to the council, but I received word, and now it's probably down to about a week or two, from a gentleman who actually has a lab here that's going to be opening up. And it says right here, they'll be able to increase the Mexico testing by 25%. It says, which the governor desperately wants to do. And so they're just, they're just waiting. I think they're, I guess the best way to, to compare it is a, like a little mini tricor, an opportunity to be able to test and get the results quicker here in Las Cruces. So I'll keep counsel posted on that. And I apologize if I didn't mention to it last, to, to you last time on this.
Thank you.
And by the way, Lorenzo Alba from Casa Pedregno, he just sent me, I guess they have at their, at their mobile food pantries, they're doing some additional, there's some COVID-19 testing sites. And towards the end of the discussion, and I sent it to Adrian, he can maybe post it for you all, so you can see it. And then David can probably, David Myers, probably send you email, so you all can have that. Send it to your, on your social media if you'd like. And we'll put it on our website as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Ben Como and Councilor Flores.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dawn and Dr. Landon for being with us today. I really appreciate it. Um, I just have to say that I, I'm feeling a little sort of unsettled with this notion that we want to take out certain numbers so that our data looks better because it's more convenient. Like, we cannot take out, I think it's naive to say, well, let's take out the numbers at Otero and the numbers at the meatpacking plant. Because people work in those places. People go inside those places. They work. They come back out to the community, right? I mean, do we know, Dr. Landon or Dawn, do we know if the, if the meatpacking plant is still closed?
Um, yeah, this, this is Mike Landon. The meatpacking plant is not still closed. They met Department of Health criteria. And Dawn, I think they were, we were doing retesting. Do we do retesting yesterday?
Yes, Dr. Landon, we, we were there last night and yesterday and finished up this morning, actually.
Right, right. And, and with respect to taking out numbers, we're not taking out any numbers. That's why.
No, I know, Dr. Landon. I was talking morally about some of my colleagues.
Just talking about me, Dr. Landon.
Well, that's why your reproductive rate, or one reason why your reproductive rate is 1.33, because we haven't taken out any numbers. But it is, it is reasonable. When we look at the Epi curves, it's important to understand why rates are going up for the state and for a region. And one way to do that is to hypothesize that, okay, what would, would the rate have been consistent or stable if these things had not happened? I mean, they did happen, but if they hadn't happened, would the rate have been stable? And for, for the southwest region and certainly for Dona Yana County, the rates would have been more stable if those things hadn't happened. So it gives us an opportunity to, to, to hopefully prevent that from happening next time, to look at ways for preventing that from happening next time by better understanding what is leading and accounting for the, the growth.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think those are important things to consider. Or is the Department of Health, I, I briefly heard you say that you are doing more testing at Otero Processing Center. Are you, is that correct? Are you doing that at both the prison and the detention center?
Dawn, you want to?
Yes, Councilor Sanchez, Ms. Dawn Sanchez, Department of Health, Councilor Ben Como. We, we are helping with doing the testing at the detention center, the ICE facility there in Southern Dona Yana County. My understanding that the prison is doing their own testing.
How long have you been doing that for, Dawn?
We have been assisting at the ICE Detention Center. We, we have been working with, we've been working with them for a couple of weeks now. We were testing there on Wednesday. And then we're going to be going back today as well to finish up testing there.
Um, are they, what kind of precautions are they taking? I mean, I know like right now, I know that I've heard things like they don't even have soap.
Hey, Councilor Ben Como, Bernadette Gutierrez, our, our regional Epi nurse is the one that's in communication with them. She'd be the one who'd be able to better answer those questions for you.
Okay. I, um, maybe staff or something can get me the contact. I would love more. Um, I mean, I think, you know, two weeks ago, I had some, a call with some advocates on this and there was maybe four confirmed cases at Otero County and now there's 39, I believe. Um, I mean, that's just a gross disregard for human life, frankly. And I certainly hope that the state begins to take more of a hands-on approach about how we take care of people in detention centers.
And we did, just, just one point. I mean, I agree with you that.
Excuse me, Dr. Landon. Pardon, pardon me, sir. I just need you to identify yourself because we don't have your picture and we don't have your name. And for, for records of open meetings, Zach, we need to have you identify yourself. I apologize.
I, I really apologize for that. Dr. Michael Landon, State Epidemiologist, New Mexico Department of Health. And the, the federal government was actually having trouble getting the test collection, I mean, the, the collection supplies for Otero County Processing Center. So the state actually worked to provide those. So we are, we are working with them. And, but your, your, your point about the, the huge rise in cases, that is, you know, we just, we just have to get a lid on that and reduce that number quickly.
Great, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that there are more testing sites being provided in Southern Dona Yana County. Um, I mean, I want, I, I'm assuming that, Dr. Landon, perhaps you and some of your colleagues are in direct contact with our colleagues in the county commission?
I, this is, this is Dr. Mike Landon, State Epidemiologist, Department of Health. I have not, I, I'm sure some of the colleagues at Department of Health are. I, I have not been in contact with them and I'm not, I'm not sure who's been in contact with the county commission. I, I, you know, the governor's office is working very hard to keep in touch with all the municipalities. So I think they would be involved with that. And then we also, the Association of Counties had a meeting. And I don't know all the counties that were involved, but I'm sure Dona Yana County was involved in terms of discussions about the outbreak and protections that can be employed as, as we're talking about reopening.
Yeah. I think, Mr. Mayor, David Myers, I think, I think it'd be important for us to have a joint session with our colleagues on the county commission to think through some strategies about, about how we, how we lessen these cases. I mean, I think it's idealistic and frankly irresponsible to think that we're doing so well in Las Cruces. So we should, you know, go about opening up just as quickly. I think that's irresponsible. I think that we're kidding ourselves if we believe we're isolated, that Las Cruces is somehow isolated from transmission rates at the rest of the county. I mean, people who, people work at the Otero Processing Center, they leave, right? Like, they work, they leave, they come to our communities. You know, I just saw yesterday something about the farmer's market reopening and there was comments there from people from El Paso saying, that's great. People from, like, people from El Paso are coming to our community. And people from Anthony come here, they shop here, right? Like, these, we are not isolated from one another. We are very deeply intertwined and connected as a community in Dona Yana County. And I think we really need to come together to come up with some strategies. And, and I know, Mr. Mayor, that there's a lot of pressure from the business community to reopen. But I think it's, I think it's premature. And I think we're going to see, I think it's going to cost us more in the end if, if, if we don't take this 1.33 transmission rate seriously.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. See, Councilor Flores?
Uh, thank you. And first of all, today is May 15, which is the Ides of May. So we don't have to worry about anybody being killed today. But it's also the mayor's birthday. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much.
You know, in the middle of all this doom and gloom, at least we have a happy day for you. So thank you very much, Dr. Landon, Mr. Morgan and Ms. Sanchez. Thank you all very much. I, I, I think that the questions that my colleagues, Abeta Stube and Ben Como raised are parallel my concerns or mirror my concerns. And I don't know how many of you have been to, visited the Otero, I call it a prison. I don't use processing or detention center. I don't use any euphemisms. It, it's a prison. And I visited about five or six years ago and with a group of, from UU and mega-women voters. And they cleaned it all up for us to be there, but it was difficult, difficult to breathe. And I carpooled with a few women and, and I made it very clear that I wouldn't be able to stay there too long. And after about two hours, I had to get out of there. It, it was, it smelled. They were saying that they keep it very clean. We, you know, we saw a dead cockroach near the kitchen. And those were like, you know, like in the, it, it, it felt very, it was awful. And they were saying they have soap, they have showers. And, and I was able to speak to some of them because I'm fluent in Spanish. And I asked them if they were able to shower, if they were able to did this, that and the other. And they took us to one room, several bunks and stuff, that sort of stuff. And they showed us where they showered. It didn't even look like there was running water in there. I mean, it's hard to tell because, you know, it just didn't look like that, that area had been used at all. Medications weren't being given at the time. And so I'm, I'm very concerned and I, and I think I agree with Councilor Ben Como. Those counts have to be taken. We can't let those out. We have to leave them in there. And my concern is that, as Ms. Sanchez just said, they just started testing there two weeks ago. And so it means that we have pockets of the forgotten people. And, and it has a lot to do with the testing abilities, the testing, uh, you know, the, the testing capabilities all around having the right tests. Because there's different, they're finding that this, I mean, they've been saying this for quite, quite a few weeks now that they're finding that there's actually different strains, that it's like a mutant-type virus that is out to survive. And so it's hard to tell whether the testing is, is not right or can't be adjusted or whether the, we know there's no quote cure or vaccine or anything. But as far as mutating, then you'd have to have a test that is picking up that particular virus. I mean, if you're testing for a flu, you know, it may not come up. If you're testing for COVID-19, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not a scientist, Dr. Landon. I'll leave it to you and people in your field. But in terms of just the common sense, we have to ask, what kind of test is being done? How long does it take to get the results back? Is it really realistic to think that he's going to be tested? And, and even though, I mean, I've had some concerns personally as to whether I might have had, I know I, I just called it the crud for about three months. And, and I called it the crud because there was nothing that would make it go away. And, but at any rate, you know, and then I'm really disappointed because several weeks ago, Councilor Abeta Stube asked about having our local facility, having a local lab and having the test come back quickly. And not more quickly because they're not coming back quickly at all. And that's poor, poor grammar anyway. But if they, if there's a better return on those, on those tests, the results. So, and, and we haven't heard anything from the state. I asked David Myers, the manager, if he'd heard. And, you know, there's nothing going on. So I, I don't understand why there's all these, all this talk about everybody being tested. You know, with all due respect to everyone who's saying that, but there's no way of actually doing it. There's, we don't, I don't think we have the, the, the testing facility. We don't have the lab facility. We don't have the tests available. We don't have the personnel. We don't have the this, we don't have that. And if we, and if we open up and we already see, you know, we see it spiking up again, as Dr. Landon said. So do we really have the capacity? Because some people are beginning to feel that, oh, we can just go all out and open and, and do whatever. Are we going to have the capacity? Because I, I just, I'm feeling, I'm not feeling, I'm seeing that, you know, in, in different cities, in different places where safeguards and guardrails have been taken down, they're spiking up again. So, you know, I, I think, I, I don't know if any of you have anything, any knowledge regarding the strains, regarding the testing for those strains? How about the retesting? There are people who are asymptomatic. There are people who have relapse. I know Dr. Landon mentioned it last time we met a few weeks ago, that people become relapsed or whatever technical term, term scientists want to call it. But there's also the variations that, you know, this new phenomenon, especially in children. I think it's being called the Kawasaki Syndrome. And they're finding that there are other long ailments. So is all of that taken into account insofar? And the reason we need to know, the reason we as local officials here who make policy decisions for our residents in the city of Las Cruces and, you know, affects everybody here in the county, is that we need the information to be able to make. here in the county, is that we need the information to be able to make, uh, you know, uh, the right decisions that are in the best interest and, you know, health and safety, welfare of our, of our residents. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very, I'm mystified, I'm mystified at how we're saying everyone's gonna get tested. That, that's not gonna happen. It just can't. But thank you very much. And if you have any answers to my questions, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, uh, this is, uh, Michael Landon, State Epidemiologist, Department of Health. And, um, the, you know, I think it's important to know that the state is really in the forefront of testing. Um, I have sort of the latest numbers by state here. Now Rhode Island, North Dakota, New York and Massachusetts are, uh, those four have higher testing rates per capita than New Mexico, but they're only four states that have done that. And, um,
Sorry, what were they, Dr. Landon?
Those four are Rhode Island,
Matt?
North Dakota, New York and Massachusetts.
Great, thank you.
Uh, those, those have, um, those have higher testing rates than New Mexico. The, uh, New Mexico has substantially higher testing rate than Texas, Arizona, Colorado. Utah is slightly below New Mexico's and we're way ahead of Oklahoma. So for our region, we're, we're the, we're the clear leader. Um, and, um, Utah's relatively close, but, um, that's a good thing. Now, that doesn't mean we're doing as much testing as we want to, but, you know, with the, under the governor's leadership, New Mexico's really been, uh, gotten to a, a more favorable place with respect to testing. Now, we also talked about test positivity rate, which is the percentage of tests that are positive. Where does New Mexico stand with respect to that? Well, New Mexico's at, New Mexico's, the state is at 4.7% based on a prior week's result. Um, and the US is at 14.1%, 14.1%. That, that percentage is similar to the positivity that we have in the, in the area of the state, the Northwest, which has our highest positivity rate. And we are, let's see, in terms of our order, uh, we're about tenth, tenth lowest in terms of positivity rate. So all those things are good. And I, I think, I think let's keep that in mind and let's, let's work constructively to make sure, you know, all regions of the state are feeling like they're getting, um, more and more testing and eventually hopefully enough testing. And I think, I think we can do that together and, you know, the, the governor has really been focused on increasing testing and I think that's benefited the state, uh, substantially. So, those are just some points I wanted to emphasize.
And what's the, uh, testing positivity rate for New Mexico, Dr. Landon?
So for, for our report that we put out May 13th, it's our weekly report. It is for, uh, the positivity rate for New Mexico is 4.7%.
Okay.
The lowest is Alaska at 1.3% and the highest is New Jersey at 32.5%. And the US-
Is that per capita?
That, yes, it's per, it's per hundred, per hundred people. It's, it's a percentage, so it's per a hundred.
Per hundred? In terms of the, tested or in terms of, uh, the population as a whole?
It's in terms of the, um, the percentage, y- you're right, it's not per capita, it's of, of those that were tested, only those who are tested. So 4.7 out of 100 people who are tested were positive in New Mexico. And in the US, it was 14, 14, uh, out of 100, 14%.
So that means that the more people you test, the higher the positivity rate would be probably. I mean, that's, that's an assumption that one can make, right? I mean, if you have a density of, of, of testing, then you're going to have a higher return of positivity.
Well, well, generally what happens, you know, like when we're starting out, when we're starting out with this, um, we focused on people with mainly symptoms and we focused on the sickest people for testing. Um, that led to a higher, uh, positivity rate because there was a greater likelihood those people would be positive. As we've gone to testing, uh, people with more different symptoms, people that are, who are not having, currently having symptoms that are asymptomatic at the moment, the positivity rate, uh, actually goes down. So we would expect the more testing we do, that over time, the positivity, positivity rate would go down.
And Dr. Landon, what testing, what is it testing for exactly? Do you know?
Yes, it's, it's testing for the, uh, the specific virus that causes COVID-19. And it, it is, um, there, there had been some talk, a Laddell study about a mutant, a mute, mutation of the virus, that sort of thing. It covers that mutation. It covers, uh, basically all the known mutations that we're running into, uh, thus far. So it's, it's a, it's a good test. Um, it's not perfect. Like with any test, there can be issues with collection of the, um, of the specimen. Uh, maybe, uh, someone didn't collect it appropriately, maybe that specimen wasn't handled appropriately. You can have all those issues. Um, but, um, it's, it's generally a, a good test and, um, it, it covers those mutations that people have talked about.
Do, do we have any, uh, numbers on the number of, uh, that are coming in with lung ailments or a suspected Kawasaki, um, syndrome?
We have not, we have not detected, um, any children with this variant. And Kawasaki syndrome is something that has been known before. It, it's caused, uh, by multiple, uh, uh, pathogens and possibly other things. It's caused inflammation, inflammation of the vasculature and also, um, some inflammation of the heart. And, um, it, uh, we have not detected any Kawasaki's disease cases among COVID-19, um, child patients in New Mexico. And if I could, I, I, if I could just interject, and I'm sorry to interrupt the flow here, I just, um, we got the latest run on the R effective for Southwest from today and I had not, what I provided to you was an earlier number. Uh, encouragingly, the R effective for today is now at 1.17. So it is, it is improved based on recent case counts and that sort of thing. So that's, that's encouraging. I just, I'm sorry to interject that. After all that discussion about 1.33, I just wanted to let you guys know some good news.
And as far as, um, testing goes, um, and this is for all three of you, um, are we, how, um, how are, or are we, well, as a community, as a health community, are people being retested after, um, after they, uh, the symptoms have quote cleared, unquote? Or, or how, is there any follow-up on, uh, COVID patients at all? If any, or whatever?
Yes. Um, you know, so the, the, the healthcare provider for the patient, uh, they, they do follow-up, but also the Department of Health has a, we have, it's our case monitoring team and they call people back, uh, regularly through the, the course of their illness to make sure they're doing okay and also to keep track of them for what we call discontinuation of isolation. So people who have, um, COVID-19 are isolated, um, for a period of time and that period of time depends. So we discontinue the isolation, um, based on two approaches. And the, the most typical approach to use is the, what we call the symptom-based approach. So the way that works is, um, if someone has symptoms, I'll talk about if, if they don't have symptoms in a minute. But if they have symptoms, then we start the clock ticking and they, they must, um, they'll be isolated for a minimum of 10 days from the onset of symptoms. Plus, they have to be fever-free without taking any Tylenol or Ibuprofen for three days before, for at least three days before that. And their reproductive, I mean, their, I'm sorry, their, uh, their respiratory symptoms need to have been, uh, need to be improving. So that's the, uh, the basic approach. Now, if somebody is asymptomatic, say they don't have any symptoms, which we, we run into about 20% of the time in the state, um, then that date they had their specimen collected is the start date and of that positive specimen. And we go out at least 10 days from there, uh, before they can discontinue their isolation and they have to, they have to have remained symptom-free. There's also, um, an approach to repeat testing, um, that, that is available too, potentially. But the preferred, well, both approaches are, are, are options.
And how long is it taking for results to come back? It's still taking two or three days for those of us down the, uh, southern part of the county?
Um, I, I think, you know, there, there are various times depending on the lab that's used, but, uh, I mean, the rapid testing that occurs at, uh, Memorial and, and Mountain View, that comes back, um, same day. And then if it's a send-out to either Tricor or the state lab, then you've got to add the transport time, um, that sort of thing. Don, do you have a, do you have a sense of, um, in your region, what sort of turnaround time you, you all are seeing?
Um, this is Don Sanchez, Southwest Region Director, uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, uh, Dr. Landon. I, I think it's the same like you mentioned, like it just depends on, again, the, um, the type of test, if it's a rapid test or if it's being shipped to SLD, Tricor. Um, I think we're, we're anticipating, you know, still, I think, working with that timeline and getting test results back, um, I think, you know, within 48, 72 hours, up to five days. I know there are some that take a little bit longer, but that's just, I think, dependent on the, the process.
So, um, do any of you know, um, how it is we're going to be doing, uh, 500 tests a day and you getting the results and then, uh, getting back to people one way or the other? I mean, I mean, it must be terrible to think that you have something that's going to kill you or make you die and then have to wait, um, I mean, anywhere from two to three or four days or whatever, up to five days? I mean, that, that must be a living hell. So, um, has that factor been taken into account? Or is there any way of speeding it up?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, um, this is, uh, Michael Landon, State Epidemiologist, Department of Health. And, um, there are, we're always looking at ways to speed it up. Uh, for example, um, we are working on, uh, you know, it's important people get their results so they can act, uh, with that knowledge. They do a better job of isolating and then the, the contacts around them do a better job of quarantining. So, or self-isolating. So that's very important. Uh, we're, we're focused on two initiatives to improve the speed at which people get their results back. There's a portal, uh, for test results, which is currently available. We're working to improve that. Uh, some of the challenges have been the, um, having mistype names or phone numbers and that gets in the way of getting back in touch with people. Um, so that's an effort. There's a new, uh, call center, um, function that's being set up on the coronavirus line, um, to focus the questions about test results. Where can I get tested? All those things. So those are, those are new initiatives. Uh, in terms of getting in contact people, in, in particular, the people that were, uh, had a positive test, um, the state is ramping up, uh, contact tracers. Um, we're currently at about a, you know, about 120, 125 folks that are doing contact tracing between Department of Health, UNM has a few, um, Navajo Indian Health Service has some, um, between all those groups, um, we're, we're doing contact tracing, getting in touch with people after the result is positive, getting in touch with their contacts. The goal of the state, the state is to ramp that up to over 600 and to have those, uh, contact tracers regionally based. So right now, we're doing the contact tracing largely out of Santa Fe, some out of Albuquerque, some, uh, in the Northwest with Navajo Indian Health Service. But, uh, the plan is to have five groups, uh, regional groups of contact tracers, uh, with one, uh, group based in Las Cruces. So we think that will, will help the, the speed at which we get in touch with people, the speed at which people get, uh, isolated and the speed at which contacts get, uh, quarantined or self-isolated. So we do want to, uh, we agree with you that this is an urgent matter and that we need to improve the timeliness of all these steps.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, this, this is Don Sanchez too, with the Southwest Region, so in partnership with Mike and the response division with the case investigators for the positive cases. We as well have some contact tracers here in the, in the region in Las Cruces helping with that in support of ERD's efforts. And also, we have, uh, several nurses too that are calling the negative results as soon as we get them. So that's one of our tasks every day to make sure that negative results as well are turned around as quickly as we can to, you know, notify folks on that. So we do that, um, here in Las Cruces, our offices as well do that and that's a task, it's a daily task that we have. Um, and I think just a quick comment on the, the 500 day here. I mean, that's something, that's probably a goal we're gonna work towards. And again, that's gonna depend on resources and partnerships from others helping with the testing. That might be, uh, ambitious. It probably is ambitious, but I think it's something that we're definitely gonna work with our partners locally to obviously ramp up the current level of testing to, you know, higher levels throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Landon, and thank you, Ms. Sanchez, for your, um, for your answers. Thank you very much and thank you for your work. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before we get to Counselor Sorg, so, uh, Dr. Landon, I just want to clarify something I know Counselor Flores asked and, and I was listening to your question and I don't know if, if, uh, you know, I, I know you, you, you responded in your way. So she was talking about the positivity rate and I think that's the one where you told me that I'm initially mistaken for, mistook for, um, transmission rate and that's the number of cases, uh, confirmed divided by the number of tested. Isn't it correct?
Um, correct. Yeah, the positivity rate
Right, right.
is the, the percentage of tests that are positive. Yeah.
Right. And so Counselor Flores said, well, it seems like the more tests that we take, then maybe the positivity rate will go up. And, and, and actually, I, I don't, I don't know if that was, uh, fully explained. And so, so Counselor Flores, so let's say, uh, 100 people were tested and 2%, I, I, excuse me, and two people tested positive, then the, the positivity rate would be two. And, and same as if, um, uh, now if you had 200 people tested and only two tested positive, then the positivity rate would be 1%. So even though it can go up, if, if the number that have still coming back as positive remain the same, actually the positivity rate could drop. Isn't that correct, Mr., uh, Dr. Landon?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. The, generally, the more people we test, generally, the more people we test, eventually the positivity rate's gonna go down.
Right. And then that's the one that, okay. And so you said that our state as a whole was about 4.7?
That's based on our, uh, our, uh, May 13th weekly number, yes, 4.7.
Yeah. And so, but that, that included the entire state, like even including San Juan County and McKinley County?
That, that's correct. And they, and they, we're doing a lot of tests out there and that really, that boosts our positivity rate.
Yeah. Their positivity, their positivity rate is like 15%, 16%. So what I'm trying to get at is, now the governor just recently, uh, on the, on, on Saturday is gonna open up the state, but I believe she's leaving that part out, correct?
Le- leaving, yes, correct. The Northwest region is not, they're still in the separation phase.
Yeah. And so what I'm trying to do is, is when I was asking about leaving, uh, looking at numbers excluding parts of our county, that's the reason. So if the state does it, you would think that we could at least look at it too. And that's all I was trying to get at. So, you know, when you remove that- So, you know, when you remove that, because obviously she's opening up the entire state except for those counties. Because the transmission, the positivity rate is extremely, it's three times higher than what the average is in the United States. And so that's the reason. So I just wanted to just verify that she in fact was not opening up the entire state. Those two counties are, are, the Northwest is closed. And, and, um, and I'm glad to hear that our transmission rate has dropped to one point one seven. Because it was two days ago, one point three three. And, and just for my colleagues', uh, information, and I haven't checked it now, but our transmission, I mean, our positivity rate, was two point nine percent a couple of days ago, whereas the state as a whole was four point seven. So, all right, Councilor Sorg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what you're asking.
Yeah, hold on a second. Councilwoman Florida, Councilwoman Florida wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Well, I understand everything about the positivity testing, Mr. Mayor. I fully understand that. But, um, where in area, there, we live in, well, we, we know where we live. This is a very rural area. And my concern is that, um, when it first, uh, came up in, uh, Bernaleo, we thought, well, that's a very metropolitan area, you know, the airports there and people are coming in, traveling from all over the place. Um, you know, fine. And then we look at, um, the southern, uh, Doniana County and, oh, it's because, uh, we have the, uh, Doniana, uh, excuse me, the Otero County prison there. And we have, um, and, uh, Stampede. Um, but those were, you know, like clusters and, and living in a rural state. And because we are a border community, I think there are a lot of people who are going to be very reticent about coming forward. Uh, I think that there's, you know, there's always a problem with the Nigra, you know, ICE and all that sort of stuff. And, um, so I, I, and I, I just want to look at, you know, the realistic picture. And I understand, I, I don't think necessarily the projection that if you test more people, the percentage is going to go down. Maybe the percentage will go down, but the numbers will still go high. So, um, I just want to clarify that. I understand that, uh, you know. Thank you very much.
I, I just wanted to also point out that I'm sure that we have some Los Crucesans who have to travel to those counties. Maybe not that many of them, but I'm sure that they have had to travel for whatever reason in the last thirty days. And so they theoretically could be traveling to some of the hottest spots in the state and still coming back here to Los Cruces. But thank you very much for that, Councilwoman Florida. Councilor Sorg?
Okay. Um, I don't have a whole lot. I, most of what I was interested in learning is, uh, has been asked by my colleagues, um, that have spoken already. I appreciate that. Um, I won't go over almost all of that. Um, but I did want to bring up again, that was kind of touched upon, and I'm not sure if we covered it enough. And that this lab at the New Mexico State University called Alliance DNA Lab that is offered to do testing right here. Uh, and it's rather fast test too. Uh, can I get from somebody, uh, DOH, the, the status of their lab as far as testing our, uh, cases here locally, countywide?
Don, do you mind doing that?
Don?
Um, yes, um, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, Councilor Sorg. Um, Dr. Landon, this is Don Sanchez, Southwest Region Director for the Department of Health, Public Health Division. Uh, Councilor Sorg, can you clarify a question you're asking about the status of the testing of our samples in this area?
Okay, sure. Uh, the chief operating office, uh, officer of his DNA laboratory has contacted the council. Asking for some help to, um, get into the system of testing, um, for, uh, coronavirus here anywhere. Uh, they'll take samples from anywhere, I'm pretty sure. And I directed, uh, Mr. Stefan Long to go to you guys in Department of Health. I didn't specify any particular person though, and that you must coordinate with them. And he was all for that. He says, yes, we want to do it. In fact, I'm reading his email now, and I'm not sure if he actually comes right out and says he's already contacted you or not. Um, but he wants to do that for sure. So I'm wondering if that's been done? And where this, what the status of that connection with this laboratory here at NMSU, uh, would, uh, would be at now, right now?
Uh, Councilor Sorg, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Sorg, this is Don Sanchez, the Public Health Division, Southwest Region Director. Uh, Councilor Sorg, let me follow up with you on that. I do not have any recent information about that, but I can definitely, if you want to even share with me his contact information, I can make sure we can, we can re- revisit that link. And like Mike said, Dr. Landon said, it's probably through the state lab division out of Albuquerque would be the ones to work in coordination with them. So I, I can follow up with you on that. I have not had any direct communication myself. If I can help follow up with that. Okay?
Okay, for sure. I'll send it to you today. Um.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. That's well, excellent answer. I appreciate that a lot. Um, I know you all have been working very well, uh, hard. This must be a very taxing time for the Department of Health and all the healthcare workers and first responders, et cetera. Um, and it's a huge effort that, uh, you're doing. Um, I just have a little question about the thinking ahead or planning ahead. I'm not only thinking of what we're at, where, where, where we are right now and what we're trying to do now. But what we want to do in the near future and even tentatively looking at months ahead here. When, uh, you hear words about, um, a second surge or a reinfection of, the, the coronavirus. Um, I was thinking, when I heard about the, uh, meatpacking plant in, uh, South Dakota, Fall, South Dakota, the Smithfield, having such a hot, being a hotspot there, the first thing that came to my mind was Stampede meats. And, um, I said, oh, I hope we're taking care of Stampede meats and, and so forth. Um, I don't know, I, I understand it's a real big problem to have, tracing and, and, and tracking of, of, uh, the virus in a place like that where you got people coming from all over the region to work there. Um, but anyway, I, I wish you the best. It's, there again, as you said, the coordination with Baca de Norte was quite good. Um, the governor talks about, is talking about testing and tracking and tracing. Um, and I appreciate that a lot because I think in the long run, in the long future run here, and that even in the next few weeks, um, that will help. You can just imagine how, I can imagine anyway, how, uh, if you know who has the virus and who they have contacted while they're, uh, infected. Uh, where they're, they're able to pass it on and, um, quarantine or isolate these people like this. And if that's done thoroughly and we catch, although theoretically, everybody that does that, we can nail this, the whole, uh, COVID nineteen down. But it's a huge task, I understand. Um, so with that, I, I think I'll pass on to, uh, the mayor. Thank you. I think you.
Thanks, Councilor Sorg, for your information. And Don, it's called the Alliance DNA Laboratory. And let me just give you their phone number. It's one eight hundred eight nine zero five seven two two. And they claim that the tests only cost ninety-nine dollars and they get the results in twenty-four hours. And they're located on the campus in the Mexico State University in the Arrowhead, Arrowhead Research Area on Genesis. Road or street, wherever, yeah, on, in that area.
Mayor, what they are requesting to is some funding so they can get the reagents and, and so forth to do it.
Well, we can even took, take, let, look at it ourselves, uh, for some of our residents, and we can maybe provide some of that too. What we, you know, but let Don reach out and see how we can work a partnership with them. And maybe on our next call, they can let us know what's happening. But thank you for giving us that information. And that is different than the lab that I was talking to. So, okay. So, uh, Mayor Portem, Gondra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for asking some very pointed questions. I understand the concern. Um, just want to remind folks, I appreciate Dr. Landon being on the call. Um, you know, he, he lived here, worked here. Um, and he was the epidemiologist when I worked at the Department of Health. Don and I go back a very long way. So I appreciate the work. I trust what they do. I know that the staff is inundated with, um, the work here. Um, and, and so I, I just want to say publicly, thank you. Thank you to all of you. I hope this is, um, and I hope that we can, and I appreciate you be, taking the time, um, out of your busy schedule to have these conversations with us so that we understand using science, right? And data to support sort of the way, the ways that we want to continue, um, to move forward. So I agree with Councilor Benkoma that, um, a joint, um, work session with the county definitely needs to be had. I, I feel like in the last probably week and a half, after talking to so, some of my contacts at the governor's office, that, that they are very worried and concerned about what's happening here in the Los Cruces area. Even though data shows, and we all can go and look at the dashboard very specifically. Um, to see where we're at in Los Cru- in Los Cruces. The numbers haven't changed too terribly much. It's been maybe a few days that I've looked at it, but they are, um, changing rapidly. And we now know because of Otero and the Stampede area. But, um, Dr. Landon, I'm concerned about the Chaparral area. That's where I think the majority of the cases now. The, does that Stampede area reside there? I didn't think it did. It's out the terrestre. But when I look at the, at the, um, the dashboard, you know, where you go into the zip codes and such. Chaparral has a huge number. And so I, I, I am, am I right, right on, on that? No?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor, um, Counselor Gondra, um, the, the prob, the, the challenge with that zip code map is for the county map, we've, we've pulled out the, um, we pulled out the cases from the, the federal detainee cases from the county totals. They're still in the regional totals, but they're pulled out from the county totals. For the zip code map, um, I believe we've got those. The one reason why it's looking like the rates are so high is because that's the, um, that's the location of the Otero Processing Center. Um, so that's, that's a, uh, a falsely, uh, elevated, uh, rate, I believe. Well, not, I won't say falsely elevated because those, those, those people are there. They're just in a, they're not out in the community. Like, um, like we have in our others of codes.
Okay. Okay. But as we know, I guess what I heard you say, that in Otero and Stampede, that you're working with the Department of Health, not only, and I know you have strong relationships with El Paso, um, Department of Health and Juarez, um, that some of workers, right, are, um, and I know I'm mixing apples and oranges because some are Otero and some were Stampede. Um, and I think specifically your statement was that for the Stampede, um, there's are in that El Paso and Juarez area specifically.
The, um, for Stampede, we had one third of the cases were New Mexico residents. And they were counted in New Mexico case counts. And, um, two thirds of the cases, uh, actually live in El Paso and were included in El Paso's case counts. So it's, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a little challenging because of, for Doniana County being right next to, you know, Otero Processing Center and also, um, with, uh, right next to El Paso, the counting of case, counting of cases can be a little challenging, but we base it as much as we can on residents.
Right.
Um, so, yeah.
So I, I, I appreciate that because that was one of the things that in my conversations with the governors and such, what, feeling like I need, I, I needed more information around tra- tracing and tracking. And, you know, they definitely, because of confidentiality and HIPAA, um, want to refrain from that. And I'm not suggesting that for, to hear from you specifically, that was some of my concern, like where are they? Where do they come? Are they coming up here to Los Cruces? And you can assume with some of the migration patterns, right, the, um, the tracking that you're doing with, with, um, the cell phone or whatever, that, that you can, you can hypothesize, right? That some of that is happening. We should be very concerned. And we should be, um, really trying to come together, um, with the businesses and such, to have a, um, a deeper understanding what the sciences share i- is showing us as it relates to these cases. And what we need to continue to do, and that is staying home, right, social distancing, um, washing your hands, those kinds of things. And to you, all the experts that are doing the tracing and tracking, um, 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 to ensure that we're getting it, um, in the fourth, quickly. And that people understand what they have to do to self-quarantine. I think that's super important. And I would agree with Councilwoman Florida. That there is still a stigma, right, especially in those areas about going to the doctor. People don't believe that they need to. Or, you know, they're, they're just, um, you know, dealing with this on their own. So, um, I do think that a campaign strategy that addresses this is probably very important. Then I don't know if the health department has any campaigns as it relates to, you know, going to the doctor. Ensure, you know, using the numbers right for COVID, but making sure that you're, that you're getting tested. Um, because you just mentioned twenty percent of, asymptomatic?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yes, that's, that's correct.
Yeah. So that, that is concerning. Do you have that percentage of the asymptomatic, um, um, people that you're testing, um, um, for our region specifically, Dr. Landon?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor, no, we, we don't have that for, um, by region or by county.
Okay. I, I, um, can you get that or is that not something that, um, makes a whole lot of difference? I guess I'm feeling that it does so that we can educate folks about, um, testing, 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 right? If you, um, you might be symptomatic and that's a problem because now you're going out. You're, we're opening up, especially in the area. People frequent El Paso to grocery shop, have family members, you know. Um, I'm just thinking of myself. I have, um, both, um, um, family members on, um, my mother's side and my father's side there, um, that live in those, in those hotspots, those areas. Um, and so I, I think, um, the education is, is really important.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Counselor Gondra, um, the, uh, twenty percent number was basically a sort of a sample. And, um, we, we don't have that, that same level of data for, for, um, we, we had to process that same level of data for all the cases. So I think, I think it would be fair to, to use the, the twenty percent number, um, for the state. Um, and, um, I, that's, that's what I recommend. But I agree with you. I think it's very important to get that information out and to do a good job with that.
Okay. Um, and I appreciate, I think it's important to increase the county test sites. I've seen, um, some, some information. I've put it on my social media about the testing that's occurring. Um, Mesquite area, um, at the church there, I think. Um, in the Butterfield, um, and then in the northern part of the community. I think those are all important places. And now, and now to hear that, um, you're working with La Clinica de Familia. Now, how can the city help in any of that? Is that, is, Dawn, is there something that you, um, would recommend to us in terms of partnering, um, to ensure that we're getting, um, more, more testing? And not only here, just at the Department of Health. I think you may have mentioned community of hope?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gondra, this is Don Sanchez, Southwest Region Director for Public Health. Uh, Counselor Gondra, I mean, absolutely, we're just in those beginning stages of that conversation, um, of what they can do, what we're going to do, how to partner. And definitely, um, we can reach out to you too, uh, if there's other. I appreciate your offer of support from the city and definitely I can stay in touch with you or other staff, um, of those in need. I think the city's doing a really good job. They love promoting the, the stay at home and, and the hygiene pieces. So I appreciate all the work that you are doing, each of you, um, with social media and just with, with other information coming to us. So I appreciate all the work that you are doing, each of you, um, with social media and just with, with other information coming to us from the city. That's been very helpful. I think continuing that education and support is going to be critical. But I can definitely follow back up with you once we have more information as to our, our next steps.
Okay, Dawn, uh, or and, um, Dr. London, um, the antibody testing, is that available to anybody? And, and I, I've noticed early on that there'd been a couple of days that you were doing antibody testing, but I haven't heard anymore. Um, can you address that? And, um, will we continue to see more of those sites where you're specifically doing antibody testing?
Um, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Gandra, um, this is Mike, Michael Landon, State Deputy Meteorologist, Department of Health. And regarding antibody testing, so antibody testing for this organism is, is still relatively new. And it is, is rolling out, there are a couple of FDA-approved tests. The way we're looking at the test, it's, it's most helpful for getting an idea of the percentage of people that have antibodies in a community. And it's, it's less helpful and, um, challenging to use for individual patient decisions at this time. We expect the test to get better and the test to get better and, and with more experience, they might be more helpful for individual patient decisions. But, um, at this time, we're recommending that they mainly be used to determine what's, what's the prevalence of, um, positive antibodies in, in a population, say Southwest Region or Don Yana County, that sort of thing. And the way you would do that, we, we do what's called a seroprevalence survey potentially, and there's planning for that in, in the various regions to get an idea of how many people have antibodies. Say after the, after the first wave, for example. So that's, we're seeing it, uh, as potentially most useful in the, um, sort of community. Uh, coming up with community numbers rather than individual, uh, rather than, um, determining, uh, or helping answer questions for individual patients.
So is that a, thank you, Dr. London, um, is that available in Don Yana County?
Um, you know, that's, that's a good question. I'm not sure. I believe Tricor is, I mean, it should be available. I believe Tricor is, is offering antibody testing. And, um, so I believe, I believe it's available. And it's, it's different from the COVID test itself, the, the PCR test, which confirms whether somebody's positive. That's, that's a different, that's, it's a completely different test from that. But I, I believe someone could get that test through, um, Tricor Lab.
Okay, and go ahead, Dawn, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Counselor Gandra, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, I, I, um, I just wanted to confirm if we know that specifically and is there designated days? And would people go to Tricor, speak to Tricor specifically? Or just call that number that has been advertised widely through the Department of Health?
Um, Dawn, if I could answer that, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor, I, this is, this is a different type of arrangement around this test. So the, the COVID nineteen PCR test, which determines if somebody actually currently is infectious with COVID, that is, that is what Department of Health is doing, testing clinics around and all of that. Because those tests are very important for individuals, you know, that individual needs to isolate, that sort of thing. The antibody test is different. We, we, the, our healthcare system offers all sorts of tests. And, uh, some are better than others. And, um, this, the antibody test is being offered through the healthcare system for individuals. It's not, it's not the same approach where the state is making it a priority that individuals get, um, the COVID nineteen PCR test. The antibody test is, is sort of an elective test. Someone can go to their doctor, they should be able to, and get it through Tricor. But we're not recommending that test for individuals, for individual, uh, decision-making. We're recommending the test and we will be rolling it out eventually to determine for a geographic area. What's the, what's the, what's the prevalence of antibodies? How many, what percentage of people have antibodies? That's, that's how we're viewing it right now.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand. Okay, um, um. You may mention, um, the team that addresses people once they're quarantined. Um, an individual is quarantined and I, and you're checking on them and, um, whatnot. And I'm assuming that there's a real coordinated effort with their own provider as well. In that team, would there be, especially when you're waiting for results, in that team, is there a mental health advocate? Um, some, maybe a community health, someone that can keep an eye on someone's mental health, depression, anxiety. Those things that I think are probably running pretty rampant as you are stressing about waiting for the results. But also during that time, is that something that you have considered?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Gandra, um, I think that's an excellent idea. We, I can't say we have, um, really focused on that enough. I mean, we, it's not, it's not happening right now. Um, the way it works is, uh, the process works is a, we're notified of a positive, uh, test result. Then our case investigators, some here in Santa Fe, some in Las Cruces, will be, um, will be calling the patient and making sure they know about isolation, uh, finding out who their contacts were. And then developing a list of those contacts. And that, then that list is shared with our contact tracing team, who contact all the contacts and, um, provide, um, basically provide information to them about quarantine and then a process for following the contacts up. We have another team called the Case Monitoring Team, which after the case investigation's done, the Case Monitoring Team picks it up. And they, um, they work with, um, those cases until they're able to leave isolation, until isolation's discontinued. We have a group of social workers in our Family Health Bureau that are able, were able to refer cases to individuals to that are having particular challenges with isolation, quarantine, other things. Um, and we probably need to, and, and hopefully this will perhaps help address what you're bringing up. We probably need to have that same sort of mental health referral mechanism, which we don't have at this time. But I, I think we could bring that on and, um, it wouldn't necessarily be part of the team. But if someone's having a, some challenges, we could refer them to, um, there could be a mechanism for furthering for some mental health services. And I think that'd be a really good idea.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm hearing this pretty consistently about when people are awaiting results, they're still waiting, you know, seven to nine days. I'm assuming that they're not, um, basically, um, um, testing positive, or I don't know, it's, it's still to that. If we had a lab here and people, that our, our, um, testing doesn't leave our county, we could probably do a much better job of, of assisting people through this process. And so I, I, I think you, uh, again, if, what, whatever we can do, we, I think all of us have contacts at the governor's office, but also, um, I know from, from why, what I know about what you're doing that this is super important, is that, that I'm seeing an increase in people's mental health issues with mental health, depression, anxiety as we move forward, especially, um, as people continue to, are unable to work. Um, but then this just puts an extra layer, right? And so I would really recommend that, um, a social worker, and we have the local collaborative here, Dawn, um, that could very much be a part of this process, this team that assists folks through this process. And, and would be definitely my, my recommendation. Um, as, as far as, again, I, I can't express enough, um, the importance of working with the county. Um, I think we need to have County Manager Macias and our colleagues on a Zoom call. Cause I flatly refuse to meet in person, um, like they're doing. Um, don't understand why that continues. And, um, but we need to be, again, we need to have the same messages through the county. We're all in this together, um, but there are hotspots that we need to address. And I don't see actually specifically mayor opening up Cruces, although I would love to do that. I don't see us doing that yet until we understand more thoroughly what this tracing data and what and, and, and we have a better handle on, um, you know, migration patterns, those kinds of things of people that are going back, that are going back and forth. Um, and so, um, again, I, I think we need to work together. We need to have a, uh, not only a meeting, but a, a joint campaign addressing these issues um, countywide in order for all of us to get out of this, um, in, um, in a more positive way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here, we've got Counselor Vazquez.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. And, um, apologize for not being on the video today, uh, having some, some technical difficulties outside the office. But, um, I've been
Having a bad hair day?
Something like that, um, but there, um, I, I've been listening intently and want to thank my colleagues for all their thoughtful questions and comments as well as the members of the Department of Health for being online with us, uh, again today and taking the time to talk with us. You know, I, I think from all the, the conversations we've had today, um, understanding that we have to take a holistic approach to how we move forward uh, with public health and public safety being at the forefront of the hierarchy of, of what we can provide as a local government to our citizens, I think should continue to be our focus. Um, I know we're all under a lot of pressure. Um, other elected officials in the county and, and elsewhere are under a lot of pressure, um, from all different sides, right? Economic, um, pressure, um, pressure from small business folks, um, pressure from folks who don't think it's time to reopen. And having those different conversations at the same time is a little bit challenging, um, for, for folks in terms of making decisions that, um, that are the right decisions at this time. But, um, public health and safety, you know, as a result of COVID, I think are coming from all kinds of places in addition to the virus itself. Childhood and family hunger is growing. Uh, we see that by the numbers in the food banks. Uh, depression and mental health issues, as Counselor Gandra, are also growing probably exponentially. Uh, that comes from a variety of factors, um, including, um, as Counselor Gandra mentioned, people not being able to go back to work, reliving um, the life that they were before, you know, is contributing to potential long-term health effects that, uh, we're going to have to deal with in the future in addition to now. Uh, increased rates of poverty and, and unemployment, um, you know, domestic violence rates, homelessness. Um, these things are all part of the public health and, and safety issue that I think we're, that we have to deal with in addition to the actual virus itself. If we really want to get out of this as best as we can. Um, and I know for the Department of Health, you know, your number one focus right now is, is, is obviously modeling and, and taking care of the needs that, that we have directly related to, uh, people who contract the virus. Um, and so what I'm seeing is that, you know, collectively as a state and a country, we're trend, we're trending much faster now, uh, with some states more recklessly than others towards reopening. And we have to face that, right, in terms of what are we going to do? Um, and so my, my, uh, my first question in terms of the Department, uh, to the Department of Health folks, Dr. London, is now that the, the governor's made this decision essentially for this partial reopening, um, is there an opportunity to go back if we spike? Or is this, or, or is, you know, is, we're not going back, are we? I, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask in terms of, is that a conversation you've had with the governor's office? If, if we do tend to spike again, are we going to bear the brunt of this? Um, is that what your recommendations are to the governor or, you know, where are we in terms of, of that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, um, I, I haven't had discussions with the governor's office about this. Just, uh, wh- what I know is that, um, we're, the state, uh, in the leadership of the governor is taking a very gradual approach to reopening. A very systematic approach, a data-driven approach. And if the data goes in the wrong direction, uh, we'll have to do something different. Which, which may be moving in the opposite direction from reopening. Um, we, we're hoping that, uh, by increasing testing, by being more aggressive with contact tracing, uh, we're hoping with all those things in place, we can keep, keep case counts down and gradually, um, increase activity. People will still need to social distance. They will, they'll need to, you know, telework if possible. They'll still need to do all those things. But as we, as, as, as the word gets out that people can do more things, people will do more things and, um, there'll be more contact. And, um, if our case counts go up, uh, substantially, we'll have to think of how to bring them back down. And social distancing is the, is a key way to do that, along with increasing testing and, um, a contact reason.
Thank you, Dr. London. I mean, I think I get the sense, um, on the political end of things that the governor's probably not want to close down after she's made a decision to reopen because she'll be under too much pressure. Um, politically, whether that's the right thing on the public health side to do, um, you know, probably not, right? Like you said, if we need to implement those measures of social distancing again, um, and that's really the most effective way to get those numbers down. Um, and so I'm just thinking, you know, in, in terms of what you, what you're thinking, Dr. London, is this the point where counties and cities should start diverging from the governor's directives to really be responsive to the needs of their communities? For the best public health outcomes?
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, could you, could you clarify that? I mean, I, I, I think I understood what you're asking, but I just, I just want to make sure. Could you?
Yes, so, so I'm, yeah. So I'm thinking, um, at, at this point with a general blanket, um, you know, with the, with the exception of the Northwest, um, with this general blanket order to start reopening businesses, um, uh, at twenty, or, you know, especially some businesses on a twenty percent capacity and others perhaps coming. Um, your advice as a public health professional, would you say that counties and cities should start to think about what the best decisions are for the health outcomes? That might not be reflective of an overall, you know, governor's directive at the state level?
Would that be a wise thing for us to do?
Right, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, um, I think there, there are multiple factors here. Um, I think that having a statewide approach is optimal. Unfortunately, there were, there was really a lot, a really lot of cases, higher positivity rates in the Northwest. So I think, I think it was wise to view the Northwest on a different timetable. But I think the rest of the state, and particularly with your, um, reproductive, uh, number improving down to one point one seven, the rest of the state is, you know, relatively similar in terms of transmission risk. And, um, it, I think it, I think it's easier and better for the entire state to, uh, ideally move together, either forward with reopening or otherwise. So I think, and the, the reason for that is we get very confusing. It's very confusing. I think if we, um, if we have, you know, one option in this city, another option in this county, uh, it's just going to get, it's just going to get terribly confusing. And I think there are, there are, there are aspects of public health considerations beyond COVID. I think Counselor Gandra did a really good job of bringing up, up mental health-related issues of COVID. Uh, we have all these economic issues of COVID. This state has been, and your region and your, your community has been tremendously affected by poverty, which has a negative, which is probably the main driver, uh, of health status. And, um, so we have to, we have to put all that together. So, you know, long story short, I would say that the governor is taking a measured approach. It takes into account the public health, uh, you know, the public health aspects, uh, you know. Uh, she really has a strong focus on that, and I think that's very good. The economic part of it, I view can be viewed as a public health issue as well. The economic part of it, I view can be viewed as a public health issue as well. And so I would recommend we we fully support the governor's approach. And that we not sort of break up into, you know, different recommendations in different places.
Okay, I guess I just want to be then clear on what the best. Preparation is for the city moving forward, given the governor's directives and where we're where we want to move as a state or where collectively we should be moving as a state. And if that is really preparing for a spike that's inevitable, then we should be talking about that, right? If if that's probably what's going to happen. And that means having those resources that my colleagues talked about, whether it's testing or contact tracing. Especially down here where maybe we don't have the centralized resources that they have in Albuquerque and Santa Fe. If we're expecting, as you said, you know, that consistent modeling when people stop social distancing, we will see a spike. Then I think we, as a council, need to be talking honestly about dealing with a spike. Even though the numbers are trending now, that's that's great to hear, but I think a productive conversation in addition to this one would be. Okay, guys, what are we going to do, you know, once we start reopening? And and we see a spike, are, you know, are we ready? What is the Department of Health's role in dealing with that spike? Is the state going to be prepared for that? What resources can Las Cruces bring to the table, right? If the state and federal government either can't or won't, for whatever reason, right? Provide something that we should have, whether it's contact tracing or testing facilities or capabilities. I just want to make sure that we're aware of it as a city so that we can provide it if we can through our social fund or otherwise. And so I think that's one thing that that I want to make sure we're prepared for and having those honest conversations about. And so, you know, that would be helpful for us to be able to to talk honestly and openly about that. Certainly hope that's not the case, but but it seems that, you know, conversations about the modeling that that's probably what's going to happen. And then lastly, I just want to address some of my colleagues' comments as well in terms of. The. The rates of infection and the cases that we've seen at meatpacking plants at the Otero County Processing Center. In the Northwest part of our state. You know, I think we all know that there's a common denominator here and and who is being impacted, what populations of people are being impacted. And I think this is no different than the health outcomes otherwise that communities of color. And migrant folks experience in this country and in the state. And so it's sad to see, you know, I I think it's up to us to do what we can to reverse that trend. In the consistent systemic failure of of other layers of government for those people. And so although our influence is limited to the city of Las Cruces, I know we can hopefully work with our partners at the county. As my coun- as Counselor suggested here today to address what's happening in our southern part of of. Of the state and who we're willing to put at risk or who we who we who we're willing to say. You know, that doesn't need or doesn't have to have the same resources as everybody else. And frankly, to to fight back against that because it's going to keep happening. That's not a question more more so of just a comment because it's frustrating to just consistently see. You know, who who's Elijah being who's Elijah valued and who's aren't. But with that, thank you. I appreciate the update as as Counselor Gander also mentioned, I want to be. Super mindful of your time and thankful for what you're doing. I know it's not easy. Lots of hard decisions that you and your colleagues have had to make, but. Overall, I have just been very pleased with how the governor, how our Department of Health has has dealt with the situation. As we continue to navigate through this next phase. Your honesty in helping us deal with this in our community is really appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Baita Stuvie, you had another comment?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Dr. Morgan, to Dawn. And everybody for answering all these questions. I really do appreciate it. One of those things to consider and keep in mind, should we be able to, you know. Have that opening, what are we, what does it look like for our hospital capacities right now? How are we doing? You know, I know there has been. And I think that there might be spikes. You guys have said that sometimes there are spikes when things are open. What are our capacities looking like at the hospitals?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor. The New Mexico is is doing very well with capacity. It doesn't mean that certain areas aren't stressed, particularly the Northwest. But the medical advisory team coordinating function. Has basically worked to have a partnership around transferring patients. So originally, the patients from the Northwest that, you know, sort of overwhelmed. But the capacity in the Northwest were were transferred proactively to primarily Albuquerque. But now there are there are opportunities for transferring those patients to. Santa Fe and and there's also some possibility of transferring those patients to Las Cruces. In, you know, areas where the ICU capacity really is is quite good. So there's been there's been good a good partnership and collaboration around doing that. I think I think New Mexico's. Hospital leadership has really handled this well and kept the, I mean, there are impacts, but they've kept the impacts to. You know, as as minimal as they can be. But and minimal is probably not the word because there have definitely been impacts in the Northwest, but they've they've really handled this well, I think.
Thank you. And I'm saying then that there's a possibility for transfers here to Las Cruces, then I'm to assume that. Our hospital system here in Las Cruces is doing well and fine with their capacity then?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yes, the you you have a. Very robust system here in Las Cruces and there they seem to be, you know, doing handling right well, very well to the point where there. There have been involved in discussions about helping with the with the patient load in the Northwest.
Okay, thank you. And then are we tracking, especially those patients on our border region? If they are seeking those services here in Las Cruces for hospital services or if they're going to El Paso? I do know of a couple people that said that they've sought care out on the El Paso side, but are we doing any of that tracking? Or having those conversations with El Paso?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I am, you know, there, I'm sure there are conversations going on between the Las Cruces hospitals and El Paso. For example, with our trauma system in the state does always occur. We perhaps need to do, you know, assure that they're occurring for COVID. I'm I'm pretty sure they are, but I mean, that would be something to check into. And, you know, Memorial and Mountain View, I'm sure are in communication with their. Their colleagues in El Paso. But I that's a very good point. I mean, we need to, you know, the system doesn't just stop on with the New Mexico border and. El Paso is extremely important to the healthcare system of Las Cruces.
And I would think it would be very important for us to be kind of included in the modeling for El Paso search plans, just in case as well. As, you know, this moves forward and, you know, this is not a limited issue. We're going to see this, you know. Until after there's a vaccine and everything. So I think it's just keeping up those conversations and making sure that we're. Including each other in those plans, I think will be very helpful. But I really do appreciate your time answering our questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And, you know, interestingly, just one comment. I just thought I'd take a look at. When you talked about mental health and poverty. They're projecting the suicide rates to increase because of a job or income disruption. So and I know probably you all were aware of that, but I just. Just right now, I'm trying to figure out what percent they're they're projecting. So. Another yet another thing to keep in mind. Okay, so let's see. Who's next? Counselor Ben Como.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I definitely think that's a good point. I definitely think we should revisit. The funding that we've been providing for community partners who have been. Who are the most in contact with vulnerable populations currently. And seeing if if how they're doing and how and what they're hearing and if there's a need for more to push out more resources from the social fund. I have a two questions for Dr. Landen. Or Dawn. I recently heard that someone who went to get tested at MMC said that they were asking for social security numbers. I wonder if you could speak to that and. If that's actually a need in the intake.
Dawn, do you mind talking about that one?
Well, I'll tell you this much, Counselor Ben Como, when I take my parents, well, my dad before and my mom. Even though they're they know them, I still have to provide their driver's license, social security number, date of birth, insurance card. I don't know. I I don't know if that's just a normal, what you're trying to get at. I mean, they just want to verify who they are and.
Yeah, we have a large number of undocumented immigrants who are not immune from the virus. So if you go get tested and somebody asks you that, that could deter people from getting tested.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yeah, I. I, you know, Dawn would be better able to answer what's being collected in Las Cruces. I was not aware that social security number was being required for testing. I don't think it is, but. You know, different places may be doing it differently.
Dawn, are you there? Did we lose Dawn?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm back. I lost it for a minute there, but I'm I'm back. I I'm with Dr. Landen. I don't I'm not aware that that's one that's requested. I mean, we are asking for insurance information in order to bill if that's possible, but that doesn't. We don't turn anybody away if they don't have that information or want to provide that information. So I'm not aware of the specific process at MMC, but we could follow up on that piece as well.
Yeah, can you please MMC or honestly, any other testing site, particularly if you're opening up more sites in Anthony? In Mesquite, I think, and in Las Cruces, right? I mean, if word spreads that. These testing locations are asking for social security numbers, people won't show up regardless of. It it it's hard for someone who doesn't have a social security number to say, oh, I don't want to provide that because you never know what might happen after that. So. I think it's an important piece to, even if it's, even if you're asking and it's not contingent upon you getting a test. I think it's an important piece of information to share publicly with people that you're asking it for these reasons, but you will not turn people away. If they cannot provide you that information. I would, yes, I would really like us to follow up on that.
Okay, Counselor Ben Como, we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then my last question, I'm wondering if you, Dr. Landen, if you could speak to the ma- I'm sorry, the governor's decision to. Require masks statewide and the importance of that. I think it's important to just name it publicly. You know, unfortunately, I'm hearing a lot of, it's really interesting, right? It's the same people that are pushing to reopen are the same people that don't want to wear a mask, it seems. And so. It's difficult to sort of have it both ways, right? If we're going to do a reopening, a soft one even. What are the most precautions that we need to be taking as individuals to protect each other? And so I'm wondering if you could just speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yeah, thank you for that. I think the the most important things. Are the social distancing, maintaining that six feet or more. You know, sort of. Gap between people. That's that's critically important. Hand washing, critically important, doing it frequently and making those supplies available to people in public areas as much as possible. And then wearing a face covering is. A sign of respect to other people. Because the reason people are, the primary reason people should wear face covering is to in case in the event of a cough or a sneeze. To assure that all those droplets aren't being spread. You know, out to other people. So as the governor has said. You know, we really are sort of, we're in this together. Opening up is a community thing or reopening is a community thing. And there was discussed earlier that what happens if we if we if the case count goes in the wrong direction? Well, then we're going to have to back off some of these. Some of the reopening options. So. Social distancing, maintaining the six feet distance or more, hand washing. Wearing a wearing a face covering when you're in public places and also. And also not, if you're sick, stay home. Don't don't go to work, don't go to any public places, that sort of thing. So. Face coverings are clearly part of that.
Thank you for reiterating all of those.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Sorg, looks like you're the last one.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Make it good.
I'm going to make it really good. You'll be surprised what I'm going to be saying. It has to do with the testing and the tracing. You all know that Apple and Google are combining together to have an app for tracing people. Has the state of New Mexico, has the Department of Health even discussed this idea as being something we might be able to use here in New Mexico?
And Mr. Mayor, Counselor, all options are on the table. We had several of our folks have been on a call. With other states and Google and Apple this week to learn more about that. And that's definitely an option that's on the table. We want to, we want to bring to bear. Whatever whatever benefits tech technology can will allow to improve our contact tracing in this state. So. We're looking at all state of the art options, including that one.
Okay, thank you so much. A lot. Thank you, Mayor.
Count, thank you. David Maestas, you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, I sure do. And thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to make sure and thank the Department of Health before we signed off. I want to thank David Morgan, Dr. Landen and and Don Sanchez specifically. They know we've been in constant contact. We have emails going back and forth quite often, so I appreciate their responsiveness. I also appreciate that they look into the items that we bring up. One specifically that I've asked for is how we can better inform our first responders when they have callouts. In certain cases, are there ways that we could know in advance? They have looked into two items. I know that they continue to do that and look for ways to to make it better, more effective for our first responders as well to help keep them safe. So I appreciate those efforts as well. And if anything comes up, if they do find a new method or process that we can go through. Again, I would really appreciate that. But ultimately, just want to thank and thank you again for being here on this call and and answering questions for our council. It is appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, David. Thank you very much, Dr. Landen, Dave Morgan and Don Sanchez. We appreciate you very much and spending almost two hours with us, sharing with us a lot of information.
And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to go on to the next item, two point two, Public Service Announcements Discussion. And we have with us Ms. Carla Walton, who's going to kick that off?
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Carla Walton and I'm with the Community Engagement Office and I'm going to talk to you guys today about the efforts. That the Community Engagement Office, along with the Public Information Office, are doing to make sure that. People are informed about the city resources and and to make sure that they get information in this time of need. I'm sharing my screen with you guys and pretty much whatever we approach a project, this is becoming. Or a strategy. We are pushing a lot of content right now in social media, especially in Facebook and in Instagram and YouTube as well. Because we understand that we have to do things different to be able to reach, you know, a better demographic. We also are populating constantly the city website, covid nineteen las cruces dot com with updated information. So anyone who has a question can go to the website and get information that they need over there. We are also doing news releases and a lot of the news releases that we're doing, at least for example, for senior programs. We start doing the news releases in English and Spanish because we understood that the need was there. And another thing that we start implementing is, you know, doing more utility inserts. We understand that no no everyone might feel feel comfortable with social media or might be, you know, tech savvy. So we started doing more utility inserts and the idea is, you know, we started doing a double side utility insert. One side in Spanish, one side is in English to provide information. Of course, we're still doing, you know, CLCTV, the in the radio updates and, you know, spreading the information in all databases. Some of the strategies that we are doing is, you know, PSAs. And let me show you guys. A video that we are, this is a draft of a video, they were working for quality of life. And again, the idea behind the video is encourage, you know, the community to continue, continuing practicing social distancing, continue washing their hands, continuing, you know, wear the mask now that we're gonna have the new regulations from the state. We are trying to educate the public about, you know, the importance of, you know, still being alert. And another PSA that we have coming up is one with a community communications office with the police department. And it's my understanding that that PSA is gonna be ready next week. And it's about how to wear the mask. We are also working in a poster for Quality of Life that is gonna illustrate, you know, the proper way to wear the mask, the proper way to remove the mask, and also how to dispose the mask. And I have to say that a lot of these efforts that I'm talking about, they have been focusing on Quality of Life. They are, they are, you know, they have roadrunner transit over there, they have senior programs. They have been a joy to work with. They are always open for new ideas. And they have really the best, you know, the community interest are hard. So we are trying to do our best to make sure that the public has access to this information. We did these seat covers in roadrunner transit. And they were installed, they are laminated, they are bilingual, in English and Spanish. And we installed it in the buses and every other seat. And the idea was to encourage our riders to continue practicing social distancing in the bus. And another effort that I want to talk about is, this is the most recent effort that we did with senior programs. And it was for the food distribution. They get food boxes to the New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services. So actually, Councilor Bencomo was helping them a couple days ago with the food distribution. And they had a huge achievement. So what we did is, we issued a press release. And then the press release give us coverage in Channel 9, KTSM, Channel 4, CBS, and KFOX, and of course, the Sun News and Puglia Radio. But we also did a post in social media. And I'm very happy to report that we were able to reach, yesterday I went back and I saw the final numbers, and we were able to reach 20,000 people. So the first day, originally, the food distribution was gonna be three days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. The first day, they were able to give away 700 of food boxes. And because of that, we have to make changes. So we issue again another press release yesterday with updated information. And they were able to give all the food, pretty much what was, you know, was gone. So we're very happy about that, because I was spoken with Sonia Saldana, which is the section administrator. And she was mentioning that they helped, they got people from Mesquite, from La Mesa, from Chaparral, who were coming to pick up, you know, a food box. And they are constantly working with the state to have more food distribution events. But we know that the need is there, and it's my job to make sure that the people who are, who have the need get information so they can, they can receive the help that they need. And I have to say that a lot of these efforts, Lynn Gallagher, which is the Director of Quality of Life, she came up with this idea about Las Cruces Cares. So we created a hashtag, and we're using Las Cruces Cares. So you guys go to your social media and you search the hashtag, you're gonna be able to see a lot of our efforts, their brand as, this way. And the last event that I want to talk to you guys about is the virtual Mother's Day event that we have on Sunday, you know, Happy Mother's Day. Some of you guys participated with us. Thank you so much for that. And the idea behind the event is, it was because we knew that it was gonna be a very difficult Mother's Day. We all want to be, we are moms, you know, it's very difficult to be a part in, in this type of celebrations. So we wanted to provide the community in a, to a different way to honor moms, but also, you know, a same way. That you can, you know, watch it, you know, together with your mom, together but apart, you know, watch it, you know, and maybe chat and Facebook about what you're watching in, in the video, but observing social distancing, and of course, you know, protecting all the grandmas over there. And we had the participation of museums, libraries, senior programs, we have performers, including Chris Baker. And also, some of the music that you were able to listen in the background, it was actually from the art teachers from Las Cruces Public School District. And for that one, we were able to reach almost, a little bit more than 1,900 people. And we received feedatory engagement, and all the comments were positive. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Sorg, did you have a question? Or forget to put your hand out.
Lower my hand yet.
Okay, yeah. Counselor Betas Tuvie?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Carla, so much for all the work that you've put, everything. And thank you for, you know, looking for unique ways that we can engage with our community with the, the Mother's Day event and everything. I really do appreciate it. When looking towards what our new normal is gonna be, the new, different steps that we have to take to make sure that we keep everybody safe and healthy as possible, one of my suggestions would be adding a different education to talk about how you take off a mask, clean a mask, keep it safe that way. And then also, we're gonna have to talk about a child's component on ways to talk to them and that usage, kind of making it and adapting that sort of behaviors, because it's new and it's hard. And it can be, I know for my own, the very first time they did it, it was very scary for them. They didn't really truly understand. It's very new. But just learning that adaptation, other countries have had to do it, their children have had to do it. But that education component is really important for them.
No, thank you so much, Councilor Stuvie. And one of the things that we are doing with the library is we have Storytime videos, and we also have Craft Time videos. And actually, the way that this program kind of evolved is like, at the beginning, when we started, you know, we started seeing the race of numbers in COVID, the library, we decided to do this video about teaching the kids how to wash their hands. And the video got a very good response. So that can inspire, inspire us to do more and more and more. So we will take that one in consideration and try to release either animation or with the library staff to educate the kids about wearing the mask.
Fantastic. Thank you. I really do appreciate that. I think whenever you have new behaviors that need to happen, it, it is hard, but education is really important for that. So I thank you so much for, for doing that. I also think it's great that we're having a PSA, you said, with the police department?
Yes.
Correct? Yes. And encouraging that. Are there other, beyond the inserts and the utilities and the signs on the transit system, what other, like, physical in-person ways do you think that we can put out more of those flyers or notices? Should we be thinking about if a business wants one, if we have a flyer that we could give them, anything like that?
Yes, for example, some of the information that we are getting, you know, we also ask, each department in the city has, you know, certain databases. Most of the time, we do all the flyers in a PDF format, and then we say, we ask the departments to send them out to their databases to share with business owners, to share with Las Cruces Public Schools, with the art teachers, with different members of the community to make sure that the information gets out.
Fantastic. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Carla, thank you so much, and the staff, for this great presentation, and especially the Mother's Day virtual celebration. I loved it. Thank you. I know there was a lot of effort there, and I appreciated everybody's input and participation. I agree with Counselor Betas Tuvie on the two points. I think the more information we can put out about washing our hands, the importance of washing our hands, how long that happens, how long we should be doing it. Graphics on wiping down and using disinfectant like you had, but the face coverings as well. I think there's various types that you can use, and then going into some CDC kinds of, of, you know, support, the science supporting that around washing those covering, not the ones that you have there in the picture, but maybe those the face coverings might be good. The other thing is, I know that there's a local, I don't know if it's a fiance, a woman and man, boyfriend, girlfriend, that wrote a COVID book that's being offered for children at Barnes and Noble, but they're local. And one of the things that kind of struck me in a, in a kind of Facebook posts back and forth with Board Member Ray Hadamio is, you know, the kids are having great difficulty understanding the COVID and the people, their, their childcare, their childcare providers on using masks and whatnot. And so I, I, I think doing something around the book and addressing the kids and the issues would be, I think, really important. And that might be moving to your Storytime. That might already be something you guys are, you all are doing. But I think it's important, especially, and Counselor Betas Tuvie does a really good job as a mom with small children and on council reminding us, right? She, 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 it, it feels like almost at every regular meeting, she's talking to parents with, with children, right? And sort of being vulnerable enough to talk about the issues that she's facing, which I think is, 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 is really good. And so being able to do that, I think, is important, addressing our families in Doña Ana County, I think, are important. The other part around the food box distribution, I think that's amazing. And again, to a lot of our commentary about being concerned that the need is there. I'd really like to hear from our places like Community Action Agency, Families and Youth Incorporated, especially as the school year wraps up and they start decreasing the number of food opportunities, right, for the kids, how FYI typically has been the one to address sort of those issues. So I, I think in those PSAs, I think it's important to also remind folks about the number of places that at least the county had, excuse me, the city has given funding to, to help families, especially families with children, small children. I think that's something that, that to me is, is really important. And, and more ways for businesses, right, to, as they're opening up, as a resource, to understand. I know that the restaurants and folks, I know we're getting a ton of emails from people in the restaurant industry, sort of addressing, kind of having our own plan of action to open up. But again, you know, I, I think there's a lot of smart people. Obviously, they own restaurants and whatnot, but they, 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 they talk about having a plan. So I, I think that we need to have PSAs to address different sectors, if you will. And those would be sort of my, my main, main comments. And again, working with the county, I think they have bus systems, right, that move from, from here to the outskirts of our communities, the smaller rural communities, to pick up folks. So trying to do something in tandem with them rather than apart, I think the messaging has to be on point and very, very clear that we're together in this and that we're working, we're working on, on those things. So I know that means that requires you to, a little more work, right, to reach out to the county and whatnot. But I think it, I think it really is important. But thank you for all, all your work. I think that's incredible, everything that you've been doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Counselor Bencomo?
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Carla. Honestly, I just wanted to say thank you for that presentation and for everything you all have been doing. I think the PSAs and they're really creative, involving us. I'm excited to be part of the Storytime with the library. I think, I just, all those things are really great. And I think the hashtag Las Cruces Cares lives true. Honestly, I just wanted to note that, I don't know if you all saw, but Pistol Pete had a great video on masks. And I think that the more we, you know, normalize it, and the more we, we just start getting more comfortable with it, I think the better reception. I think shaming people into wearing masks isn't gonna work. Shaming never works. And so I think the more we, you know, just talk about this normally, I think the better. And, and I think having trusted voices like first responders have this public platform to talk about how you wear a mask, to talk about, you know, really, what Dr. Landon said, it's really about respecting one another with the mask, it's a sign of respect. And so I hope that some of that language gets included in the PSA. But so I just wanted to say thank you for, for all of that and for ensuring that all of this material and public outreach is in Spanish as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Flotis?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, I just want to thank Carla. I, she and I, along with Angelica Rubio, did a presentation at Temple Bethel on the census. And, and I've worked with her on other occasions. And I just have to say that you're absolutely delightful. And I think that you are a very good ambassador for our city. You put a good base on for our city. So I want to thank you on this, the PSA's effort, but all the work that you do on behalf of the city. And, and I do believe that we need to reach out to, to children more so than ever. And I think that everybody was living with a hope that maybe everything would be okay or well enough to go back to school, that you have summer school. So we are, need to have more outreach efforts insofar as, insofar as food available to children and that sort of stuff. And I agree that we need to look at refunding some of those projects we have. But again, Ms. Walton, Carla, thank you so much for the work you do, and along with Jamie Rickman and in the Community Engagement Office. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I have to say that I have a very good mentor. Jamie is just incredible to work with, a great boss.
Yes, she is. She's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Carla. Really appreciate your creativeness and your ideas. And, you know, working, I think, with a really great communication staff, constituent services staff. Always really impressed by the quality of work from, from PIO and from our communications and community engagement staff. And so thank you. Have seen the bus wraps on some of our buses that, that look amazing. And I think finding out these creative ways for us to stay engaged and educate and communicate with our constituents is, is just really important at this time. And in addition to making sure that those communications are both in English and Spanish, which you always do a great job at doing that. So thank you on all fronts. I think this is great. And we'll definitely need to lean more on, on you and others in our staff to continue getting, getting the word out there. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Betas Tuvie, and then Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. And this question might be a little bit more for Ms. Gallagher. And it's regarding our food boxes. I know that you had just said that we ran out basically of our food boxes. Are we working with the, the state on maybe getting more increased supply? How is that looking? And what are those types of communications?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Lynn Gallagher, Director for Quality of Life. We are in constant contact with the state of New Mexico, and they are identifying their priorities for delivery of food boxes statewide. We received the initial largest grouping of the food boxes down to cover in our area, recognizing that we have a large population. They are going to work on a few other areas simultaneously, but we are working on them to identify new dates for additional food boxes.
Thank you. And about how many are we feeding a week, do you think? And it may be separately from food boxes to our to-go meals.
We, I can give you, Counselor, Mayor Counselor Beta Stuvi Lynn Gallagher, Director for Quality of Life. I can give you our numbers as of last week for food distribution. For the week ending May 8th, we provided 5,742 home-delivered meals. We provided 4,400 congregate meals and 500 and, and more than 550 food boxes over the course of three days for a grand total of 10,296,000 meals were provided last week. And that includes frozen meals to cover Saturday and Sunday supplemental food service.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I know that this is such an important program and I just want to make sure that we have all the resources that are needed for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Carla, I forgot to mention, of course, my, my, the important piece of mental health. I, I know that I had specifically addressed the child abuse awareness and the, the help lines, but I'm, I'm super concerned and continue to be concerned about mental health. And I want to remind folks, those that are listening, that we have an online screening tool on our website through Mental Health America that you can screen. And then the resources, David, I'm not sure that the resources got put on there in terms of the resources we developed, the brochure that we developed. Those are all important things that we need to ensure that, that is on there. But I, I want people to know that, because it, it sort of affects everything, right? If, if people don't address their mental health, you know, there's some really staggering stats. If you don't address it, it like takes 10 years, basically, for someone to finally get enough nerve right to get to a mental health counselor. There's all these work on, on the philosophies of before it gets to stage four. And so I just, I just, I think it's important to remind folks. May is Mental Health Month. And I put forth with the help of Jeannie Resendez through Missia Valley, a resolution to address Mental Health Month. Hopefully it gets through the process so that we have it on the 18th. And a specific day to, on, on May 28th, to where, it's like a, where green, I, I, the, the, I don't have all the, all the details, but in front of me, but I, I think it's a great opportunity to encourage people that that screening platform is there, although it gets really lost in the number of things that get posted on that resource page. So I wondered if, if we could do maybe a little bit of changing, so people have it right there that they don't have to, you know, scroll through a lengthy list of, of information. And so again, the mental health mayor mentioned suicide, they increased its suicide during this time as well. There's lots of programming in fact next week for the mayor's prevention, Suicide Prevention Task Force. We will be all trained on QPR, Question Persuade and Respond, which is a, and, and, and there will be a plan to move into this virtual platform to train people citywide on this virtual platform. So they're, we're kind of the guinea pigs, the committee here to, to hear firsthand a QPR virtually on training. And so again, there, there's so much to be said and to talk about as it relates to that. And I just don't want people to forget that mental health is a big, big deal. So there's lots of things, Carla, through David, I can send information out to you to, around specifically Mental Health America that is putting on all kinds of hashtags and Facebooks and sort of tag, you know, taglines and such that I, I think are really important. And I put a lot of that out on my social media as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn, well, David, Maestas and Lynn Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll defer to Lynn first and then if I have anything to add afterwards, I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maestas Lynn Gallagher, again, Director for Quality of Life. Just wanted to address some of that on mental health awareness. Some of the ideas as part of the hashtag Last Crusis Cares Initiative, I want to work with adding some more components for some of those issues directly. Counselor Gandara, Mayor Protem Gandara, you know, I've shared with you the change directions promotion on the five signs to know that you're in mental distress. One of the things as this new order will go into effect tomorrow that we need to be conscientious about and that I want to do PSAs on from a quality of life perspective is the fact that social distancing is still the required and best effort. Staying more, as Dr. Landon indicated, staying more than six feet away from other people. And social distancing is still the remedy to prevent COVID-19. And as we relax some of those criteria and we have people wear masks, certain people who deal with mental illness don't understand that when we wear a mask, the city is actually giving people permission to become closer in, in social distancing. So we need to educate people that, that social distancing is the best method for reducing and eliminating COVID-19. And it isn't necessarily about the safety of a mask doesn't give you safety from the virus. As Dr. Landon said, it's a sign of respect if you must go into public. And so we're working on some of those PSAs, plus trying to get, reduce the stigma around someone who might be facing some mental health issues or behavioral health issues that don't understand being in public homeless populations. We need to make sure that they understand that there is a value in that show of respect in wearing a mask. But it's difficult to have that message. It's sort of a mis-message. So we want to make sure that we have adequate training and opportunities so that the community understands that social distancing is still the best method. And if you must go out, wear a face covering as required in the order, but that doesn't eliminate the stay-at-home order that is in place.
Thank you. I think that's really important information. It's sort of a balance, right, of trying to, trying to get the best information out during this time. But especially for me, it's about making sure people know the resources available if you are in crises and/or you're experiencing depression, anxiety, where to go. Well, thank you.
David Maestas, you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protem Gandara. I appreciate the offer to provide us some additional links that we can put on our site specific to mental health and other areas of concern for people being able to get their referrals. We can also look at the setup that we have on our COVID button right now. On the COVID button that we have, we do have referrals in there for families and youth. And we also have for seniors in there. But we can look at setting up the, the site itself so that people can see that at the top of the list that becomes kind of a, what we call the hot topics, like we do on our main page. And then that way they have the opportunity to see that first. And then they can go into all the other COVID information if they need to. Because right now it definitely appears that we're moving into a stage where previously it was getting information about COVID and how to handle that. Now it's more about how do we get help, how do we get assistance for it? So thank you for the input. I appreciate that.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
Lynn, did you have another comment or did you forget to put your hand down?
Forgot to put my hand down. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay, so thank you very much for that, Carla, for that presentation. And so the next item, which is item 3.1, and I believe Barbara DeLeon was going to be discussing. Barbie, you want to talk a little bit about what's, what's happening with this issue, with this resolution?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Barbara DeLeon, Interim Assistant City Manager. And I appreciate the opportunity to present this item to you this afternoon. As you all know, we are still waiting for the formal public health order to be issued by the state. The governor spoke to hit it on the 13th at her press conference. And we know that there will be a requirement coming forward for face coverings. Because we are still waiting on that, we weren't able to provide you with a resolution today. We didn't want to have any duplication or any conflict unknowingly as we wait for that important wording. So we wanted to use this opportunity to have a discussion about face coverings and to present you with some considerations for a future resolution. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you.
And Barbara, just for my, the council and management confirmation, I just got confirmation that, no, it has not been issued yet. And they plan on issuing it later this afternoon. So you're absolute for it.
Right. I just checked myself, Mayor. Let's see. Okay, very good. If you can just let me know when you're seeing the presentation that I have for you.
Yes.
All right. So the first thing I wanted to go over just briefly, because we had a very nice presentation from Counselor Beta Stuvi on face coverings, but just to reiterate the CDC guidance for COVID-19. And as we've heard from our Department of Health Partners and Director Lynn Gallagher, the best way to avoid the, or prevent the spread of COVID is to maintain the social distance. However, CDC also includes in guidance the wearing of cloth face covers, washing hands and disinfecting surfaces. The CDC also provides guidance on how to properly wear face masks. Some of you mentioned this earlier. And I know that we have people already in the organization, I believe, from police and fire, working on some videos so that we can help to educate folks on how to properly wear face coverings, what, what they consist of. One thing I want to bring to your attention is that the CDC is very clear that for general use, we are not talking about medical-grade face coverings. Those coverings are necessary for people in a medical setting or certainly for our first responders. And so it's important that the public understand that these cloth face covers are not medical-grade. I mentioned the governor's public health order that will be coming as, as her current health order expires today on the 15th. What we know from the press release is that masks will be required of everyone in public places starting on May 16th. And we're looking forward to getting more details about and definitions for how we can properly implement that order. The governor did specify some exceptions to the requirement to wear masks that include when eating, drinking, exercising, or any medical requirements that an individual may have. So in doing some research about some of the other communities who have implemented either an ordinance or a resolution associated with face coverings, there are some different considerations that you might want to contemplate when thinking about bringing forward a resolution. First of all, as you, as you know, an ordinance establishes an enforceable action and a resolution is generally a statement of support. Some of the reasons that we might bring forward a resolution for face coverings would include, for example, support for the governor's order. If we wanted to provide a, a clear definition for face coverings. If we wanted to clarify locations that we particularly wanted to make sure that were applicable for face coverings and, and/or situations. If we wanted to specify exemptions, again, we don't know all the language that's coming forward in the, in the public health order, but these might be some additional things that we would want to consider. And then finally, of course, we have the possibility that we might issue a proclamation regarding face coverings. And if that were to be the case, then you could potentially come forward with a resolution to extend that proclamation as we have done for other proclamations in this emergency situation. So with that, I just wanted to open things up for any questions that you may have regarding any research that we did, resolutions, and certainly to get your input on a future resolution that you may want to bring to council. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Barbara. Let me, before I turn it over to council, let me just go over a couple of things. So yes, I am planning on issuing my emergency proclamation later this afternoon, which would require, and we decided to expand it to just all public facilities, public city of Los Cruces facilities, buildings, any, anything the city of Los Cruces. So that obviously would include city hall. And it would be, come effective 72 hours after the time and date I sign it. So Monday, hopefully you all would then extend it. And by that time, we'll, we'll find out what the governor has to say. And then you can either, because mine is just for city, city buildings and facilities. The governor's is really all-encompassing. And so I think we could even have a choice by the following Friday, if you wanted to continue the, the all-encompassing or just the one that's in the city facilities only. And you're probably thinking, why should we have two? And I can talk a little bit about it. Or David, did you, David Maestas, did you want to talk a little bit about it?
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I can address some and then you can add anything that you need to. So the governor, based on the discussion that the governor provided, if the health order comes through and matches her discussion, it will require face coverings in all public places, which would mean essentially that it would cover city hall and it would cover other areas where the public gathers. So why would we have an emergency proclamation? Well, that would allow us the opportunity then, if we have it in place, that we can work on enforcement if need be. Because otherwise it would be under the New Mexico State Police for their enforcement rules. That would help us to have a little bit more control over that. But more importantly, because you've heard Chief Gallagher's discussion about that and the enforcement, what it does is it allows us greater opportunity for the education aspect of it. It allows us to work with the people who may not be following the order. And we can work with them on education from the standpoint of saying, okay, these are the benefits for it. If you don't follow, you do face the, the potential for a citation. If they do get a citation and it's something that the city worked on, well, then that goes through our court system instead. And again, it allows us greater opportunity and flexibility to work with people. Because as council pointed out previously, there's a thing that we don't want, is we don't want this enforcement or this concern to be something that is detrimental to people, especially in this time of the public health emergency. Now you have somebody who's suddenly facing court, a fine, potential for time in jail. We don't want to get to that extreme, but we definitely want the ability to work with people and let them know that based on what CDC is telling us and what Department of Health is telling us, face coverings do help prevent the spread. It does help us to make sure that if you are somebody who potentially is asymptomatic, you are not spreading the disease, the virus. And we are working to make our community bring those trends down so that we can get to a point where we have a new normal in place. That would be the reason, Mayor, my understanding for the reason for having it in place. If there's anything to add, you are more than welcome to add to that. Thank you.
Couldn't have done it any better. Did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Looks like we have a couple of questions or a couple, you know, Counselor Beta Stuvi, Counselor Vazquez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Barbara, for the presentation. No, no animation? I do appreciate this, you know, I, I, I'm very much, I see the scientific benefit, the health benefit that this has. And when looking at this situation, we know, for me, I'd see it in the three parts. And it's that physical health, mental health and economic health. And they all work together. And as we move forward with this new element in our society, we have to be able to balance those aspects out of it. So when we talk about soft openings, because we know that there are really real actions, consequences about our economics right now, we also have to look at what safety procedures can we add to that element to help? Because it is a balance. And I really do believe, and the science is showing this, that face coverings are a helpful tool for us to use. And I am, I really want to make sure that we have that robust education system. And I know that it's hard on the enforcement piece. And so what unique ideas that we can have for our officers? I do think if it's still possible for us to at, at least give our officers extra masks for when they respond to those calls. So the first thing that they do is just offer a mask if the person wants one. And, you know, that, then they can proceed. But if we can try to do that sort of things, educate, because sometimes maybe somebody forgot. Maybe it's, you know, there's all different situations. But just give, having those a resource for them to give out, I think is helpful. And we hope that our community members are respectful to our officers and show them, you know, care and compassion too. Because they are doing a job to really keep the whole community safe. And we hope that in turn, our community is being respectful to them as well. The second portion, like I said, education, I think it's going to be just really important on how to keep everybody safe and why we, we do use the masks. With that in mind, there are going to be exemptions. And that's, we don't want to shame and fear, shame people about this. And so what items or things can we have? And I know they've done this with other conditions where you have a card and you present a card that basically says, I am exempt, and it doesn't give out condition or anything. It just says, I have a condition, I can help wear a mask or anything like that. So a person doesn't necessarily have to verbalize why they aren't wearing the mask. Because there are, you know, a lot of, you know, people don't want to disclose, you know, medical conditions. Nor should they have to for that sort of thing. So if there's any way that we can help provide assist to make sure that our officers and the public as well is trained on that, because there are going to be exemptions. It is going to be hard for everybody to wear a mask. You know, there are going to be exceptions with that. And then I will defer to my colleagues.
And I would just like to respond with respect to the masks, Councilor Beta Stuvi. We have had the discussion about having them on hand, how we would coordinate that. Chief Enriquez has of course been leading our efforts to ensure and our procurement department to ensure that we have vendors and avenues for obtaining the masks. Of course, you all approved $40,000 from the Tellshore Fund for that purpose. We have been utilizing that funding. We still have some funding left, but it's something we'll continue to manage and monitor as we provide the masks, both to our own employees and to the public as appropriate.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vazquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Barbara and David. You, David, you answered a few of my questions as they pertain to the benefits of having a local ordinance versus the state directive now. So in terms of the enforcement piece of that, and maybe this is a question for Chief Gallagher or Mr. Maestas. But have we thought about the process through which this will be enforced in terms of, you know, where people are probably not wearing masks and, you know, being able to look at those places as potential places for enforcement? Or, you know, how will our law enforcement folks be set up to be successful if we were to do something locally? That would require local enforcement. I'm just curious to see how that would roll out.
Councilor Vazquez, can I ask you real quick before Chief Gallagher answers? Are you talking about the proclamation that I'm looking to put forth, which is just city only facilities? Or are you talking about i- if, after the governor issues her general directive about all encompassing?
Yes, Mayor. Well, I, I know Mr. Maestas mentioned after the governor's proclamation that the state police would be tasked with enforcing that particular directive. But also mentioned that a benefit of a local ordinance, apart from your emergency declaration, Mayor, requiring masks would be that a benefit of that would be that local law enforcement would be able to enforce that as well.
Okay, so that, if, if we were to move in that, forward on that, that would have been what I referred to as option B. And that would give the city time to, to develop that for, say, next Friday to be voted upon if, if we're going to move in that direction. Because if you guys, if the council supports at least this beginning part about the city facilities and building. Then on Monday, you all would then just allow me to, for it to continue for 14 more days. And then, and then that's on one hand, that's the city part. And then by that time, we'll know what the governor says and then incorporate it or work with that. And then on Friday will be another vote, whether you want to either just continue how it is with city facilities only. Or then take it to the higher level and try to match what the governor is saying in her executive order, once we see the executive order. So I just wanted to point that out and then I'll let Chief.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Vazquez, Chief Gallagher here. Can I ask you to repeat what, what you want to know, what your question is?
Yes, Chief. If the city were to enact a local ordinance requiring masks that would be enforceable by Las Cruces Police Department. What type of approach would you take to enforcement? Would it be proactive or would it be based on, you know, folks calling in, that kind of thing? How do you envision that rolling out if you were to enact such a local ordinance?
Based upon the fact that the proclamation hasn't been made, the governor's order has not come out. All of these things are still in flux right now. The way we envision it would be to continue to request voluntary compliance and to use enforcement as a very last resort. I was been reading and I'm interested to see what the governor does say. I've been reading about her quote, something to the effect of admitting how difficult it is to enforce and saying that we're going to use, these are the governor's words, positive peer pressure to enforce this. I'm not clear what that means. So as I said, this thing is developing quickly and we are responding in kind.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. And I think, I think her approach, although perhaps not concrete on details, is the right one. The reason I'm asking for your guidance in particular is before we pass an ordinance, would like to know what the strategy would be or the approach would be. I think that's a necessary part of that conversation and deciding if, at least for me, a local ordinance is necessary in addition to what the state is, is doing or will be doing. You know, I know, I know the folks who oppose mandatory face mask ordinance really are concerned with, you know, violation of their personal rights, freedom, those kinds of things. And so being able to assure them that the approach that the city would take on this would be something similar to what the governor is talking about in terms of positive peer pressure would help us decide that. And so I know this is a really tough one, right? Because we don't, it, potentially you could have hundreds of people violating this ordinance at one, at any given time. So where would you direct your resources? How would you actually allocate, you know, officers, if at all, to, to enforce any type of violation? What I would hate, what I would hate to happen is that there would be altercations or disputes, especially at stores or other places where some folks have very strong feelings about not wearing masks for whatever reason they, they choose to. And perhaps would be denied entry, right into a, into a particular store. So I want to avoid those kinds of things. And so just looking to your direction in terms of, you know, any, any advice you might have for us as a council on, on how to go about that.
I do, I do appreciate that. We're certainly cognizant of that. I would like to remind everybody that it is violation, whether it's the state or the specifically the city. It would be a petty misdemeanor, so not, not very high on the list of priorities. Especially in case you didn't know, crime has risen year to date in Las Cruces, specifically property crime. And again, even evidenced by the recent homicide we've had as a result of property crime. So I will not feel comfortable diverting scarce law enforcement resources to enforce this on a proactive basis. We will probably do it as we see it on a case by case basis.
Chief Gallagher, can I ask you a quick question? This might help. Counselor Vazquez. So Counselor Vazquez, there was a, there was a report of a liquor store owner or gun store owner in Grants. Where the mayor was, you know, basically defined the governor's order. And so fast forward, this person, they accelerated the cease and desist, the $5,000 fine. And then they charged their 12 days at $5,000 for a total of $60,000. The difference between if the state got a hold, hold of you versus say the city, and this is where I wanted to ask the chief. The most we can go, or Jennifer, the most we can do is $500 fine. Isn't that, isn't that the case?
That's my understanding as it being a violation of the municipal ordinance, $500 fine or 90 days in jail. Believe the state enforcement has different teeth, specifically civil fines, which I understand may go up to as far higher, highest $5,000.
Right, right. And that Counselor Vazquez is why, you know, because I've had members of the media ask me, well, if the governor's going to do this, why do it? And that way we have a little bit more control, the city does, because I think the management team, the chief and everyone knows that, you know, we don't want anyone to go to jail over this. But hey, if it goes out of our hands and into the state, if the state gets called and they're the ones starting to deal with this. You know, I don't think they, they respect Chief Gallagher, but I don't think he can tell them what, you know, what to do. And so that's why I think it's important and imperative that we have our own.
Okay. No, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, definitely some, some pros and cons, having the ability, as you said, to, to have local jurisdiction over some of these potential violations seems to be more helpful than not. Understanding what that enforcement discretion will be and what resources are available is also important to know realistically. You know, what we can and can't do, and then how should, how we should be communicating that to residents. And so I think, you know, I think, you know, I support your proclamation, Mayor. And I, and given, again, given how uncertain this might be in terms of how it rolls out on the ground. Having a good way to communicate this to the public, once it does, once your proclamation does go out, will be really helpful. And I'm personally happy that the governor issued her, her, her directive. As Counselor Beta Stuvi mentioned, balancing out, you know, potential reopening of businesses in the next couple of weeks at higher levels. Needs to go hand in hand with taking more protective measures to keep us safe. And so hopefully folks understand that balance. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief.
So Counselor Vazquez, you think you'll be in support of it on Monday to renew it for 14 more days?
Yes. And you said it would, it would, in addition, it would carry a city facility mandatory mask requirement. Is that right?
Right. You know, for people, the public coming in, and there's some verbiage for city employees. If they have their own office, well, you know, they don't have to be wearing a mask in their own office. But, 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 but they should still practice social distancing when there's a resident or constituent, you know. But still, there, there are provisions in there for them. And I think a lot of these came out of Counselor Beta Stuvi's comments as well. So it's a kind of like a combination of the two, but it's primarily to protect, the, the main reason, I'll be real candid with you, is, is voting for, for tomorrow. But since what we're doing is we're kind of fast forwarding and just doing the city portion of it. And then after later on, you find out what the state is, you know, we can either just continue with the city portion. Or if the council wants to move in that direction, then you, you ratchet it up a little bit and you, you support one that mirrors what Governor Lujan Grisham was saying.
Sure. And that brings up a good, a good point, Mayor. And I mentioned this before, but I think, you know, I mean, I think potentially where you have the most people gathering not wearing masks is going to be your Walmarts and your Sam's Club and your Lowe's and that kind of thing. I think the data has shown us that and at least our probably, our own anecdotal experiences show us that. And so is there any way we can require those stores perhaps with like a capacity over a certain number of people to require free face masks as people walk in if they don't have them? And, you know, I think the Walmarts and the Sam's Clubs of the world can afford that. And so I don't know if that's something we can do or if that's something even as a city that we want to invest in in terms of providing those masks to people at those grocery stores and big box stores. Because that's where I see potentially the most non-compliance happening.
Well, Counselor, I think this is probably, and Chief Gallagher, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is how I think it may be going, could go down. Counselor Vazquez is, a lot of times either you or I or, or, you know, get, get reports of the business. So let's just say it's a Home Depot. I, I get an email, I send it to the chief, chief either sends codes or his officers or then they or, and or they'll contact the state police. But they usually go first and, and usually everything's good. But let's say they continue to do it. I think the state then either tells them either you're going to, you know, we may shut you down or you have to require all your, the people. You know, and then they themselves make a rule that they, anyone entering that store and everyone throughout it has to have a face mask. And then especially if the governor comes through with her, comes out with her, her state order, well, there you go. And then they have that to kind of work with. But I, that's, I'm just speculating that. Chief Gallagher, was there something you wanted to add to that?
One thing, I, I, we, we had a meeting on this a couple of weeks ago because of all those emails and concerns we were hearing. With regard to businesses, spoke with community development, legal, city, city management. And we came up with a possible plan whereby repeated non-compliance could result in the red tagging of that business and essentially shutting it down on the city's end.
Okay, good. I like that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Counselor Vazquez, I mean, excuse me, Counselor Florida.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everyone's comments. I have a question for Ms. De Leon and for Mr. Maestas and for Jennifer Vega Brown, the city attorney. Did any of you consult with anyone concerning the violation of someone's voting rights? I'm not talking about civil rights and I'm not talking about First Amendment rights. I'm talking about the 15th Amendment, which was amplified in the Voting Rights Act of 1965. I'm not, again, not talking about the First Amendment, Second Amendment, any other amendment. But I'm talking about the 15th Amendment and again, had to be codified by the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Has that been taken into account? And we haven't, I asked for a copy of the governor's order to see how far it went. But as you all may recall, I vehemently oppose the mayor's idea of or proposal to require masks at the voting facility here in the city. So at the, at city hall. So did anybody kick that around as a potential violation? Or excuse me, did you consult with any voting rights attorneys or anything like that?
Mayor and council, that is a consideration and there are several things that are happening nationwide. Several states have enacted these types of rules and some states have not. There was a recent ruling in Wisconsin from a Superior Court regarding that. But it's going to, it's, it's undetermined law right now, because it doesn't, there's nothing on point specific to the requiring of a mask when we're under an emergency health order. It's very different than voter disenfranchisement and any other type of situation, because this has to do with serious health issues. And it does place everyone at risk, including those that might be considered disenfranchised. So it, there's no solid line rule right now. States are all over the place and so are large jurisdictions, but yes, those things are considered.
Before you jump, jump.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Counselor Fodis, the other thing to keep in mind, two, two points. One, you had asked about the public health order as Mr. David Morgan mentioned this morning. That is not out yet. It won't be out until later today, because they still have some other items that they were reviewing that they needed to put into the health order. The other thing to keep in mind is, is whether there is an emergency proclamation by the city or not. If the governor's health order does cover public places, it's going to be requiring a face covering for the voting in city hall tomorrow anyway. That will still be in place because it, her discussion that she mentioned was face coverings in public places. And our lobby is a public place. So that would be an effect. The reason we're talking the emergency proclamation, as the mayor pointed out, were for other items as well. I hope that helps clarify that for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Maestas, but no, it doesn't, because my question is, really goes to, and I, and believe me, I, you know, I wear my mask. I, you know, I feel very strongly about all the risk, the health risk factors. And I'm not saying, you know, it's open season on anybody walking into city hall without a mask and then coughing on everybody and sneezing on everyone. But somehow, yeah, I think last week when we spoke about this. Amanda, Amanda Lopez, the county, the county clerk and the deputy county clerk. Amanda Lopez Askin and Lindsay Bachman both made a comment pursuant to my opposition to, to this measure. That, that the, the city speak with the Secretary of State's office minimally. And was that done? the city speak with the Secretary of State's office minimally. And was that done? Did anybody contact Maggie Tullus Oliver to ask about the disenfranchisement issue? Because it's still an issue. And whether people agree with me or not is immaterial. I think that when it comes to voting, voting is very, very, very important to me. And it just, to me, it's, it's a corner of our democracy, it's a corner, it's a cornerstone of our democracy. It's just, you know, and I just, I just don't want to see people feeling that they can't go to vote because they don't have a mask, or they're going to be forced to wear a mask, and where they're going to get that, the card between now and the end of June 2nd, that says that they can't wear a mask. That whole, that whole idea is just so frightening to me. And so, so, Mr. Maestas, Ms. Jennifer, Attorney Jennifer Brown, Ms. DeLeon, did you, did any of you talk to Maggie Tullus Oliver about that issue? Don't all run at once, though, you know?
I have not spoken with her, Counselor Flores.
And what did she say about that, Barbara?
I, excuse me, I said, I have not spoken with her, Counselor Flores. My research was with respect to other communities' face coverings, and not specific to the voting concern at this point.
Well, that's interesting. Okay.
Mayor and Council, I, my, my work is limited to legal analysis, so I, I did some case law search of the issue historically. I did some secondary research, and I, I'm not going to discuss what my legal research was on the record. However, I did do that. I have not contacted anybody at state level, because we're not at that point.
But we are, we are, with all due respect, Jennifer.
I've been given an assignment, and that's what I completed.
You were given an assignment to, okay. So voting rights is not an issue when it comes to voting?
Excuse me, Counsel, Counselor Flores, David wanted to jump in again.
I, I think it's just, you know.
Counselor Flores, can David Maestas jump in, and it looks like he needs to make a comment?
Sure, I can do that. Mayor and Counselor Flores, we definitely, we still have time to contact, we can still get ahold of whoever we need to, to see what their opinion is. As Ms. Vega Brown noted, what we were doing was looking in to see if there had been any determinations anywhere else. Since there were other places that had enacted this already, we wanted to see if anybody had case law that we could look at. But we definitely have time to contact whoever we need to follow up, and that way we can see what their opinion is as well. And that helps with the determination.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Maestas, and I, and I do appreciate the work that, I mean, Jennifer, you know, respectfully, I, and Barbara DeLeon, I, I respect the work you do. I respect it very much, I think. But, you know, when it comes to voting rights, I mean, I, you know, it's just an issue. One of my friends, Armin Dürfner, was actually one of the attorneys who first represented the NAACP before the Supreme Court. And this was back when, and, and it was the first case that affirmed the Voting Rights Act Sections Two and Five. So it just, to me, voting is just, the voting right is just so precious. And I, and I just don't want our city to come across as being ogres about this. And I don't want people to think that I'm in agreement with the Wisconsin decision. And I think that one went to the U.S. Supreme Court, in fact, who, because it was for the primary. And so there was, you know, there was a judicial decision on that. And yes, they did say that, you know, you can go out there and vote irrespective of watching any of the safeguards. So, you know, it, it's a tough decision for me. I've always supported the mayor, and it seems like my colleagues are all in favor of it, or seem, appear to be. But I, I just have to go on the record and say that, you know, I think we're treading in dangerous waters, and unless we can at least have some directive from, from Maggie Tullus Oliver, from the Secretary of State, at least in our own state, I'd feel a lot better. So I thank you too, Mr. Maestas, and as always, I hold Jennifer Vega Brown, Barbara DeLeon, and you in highest respect. So please forgive me for my caustic manner at times, but there's certain issues that are just too near and dear to me to state, to, to be, to not speak up on it. Thank you.
Well, Counselor Flores, thank you for that. And I actually have some good news. So our friends at KVIA TV, Kate Berry, did a, did a story on the ACLU and whether or not that they would have any problem with it. And so I sent that link just a few minutes ago to the Secretary of State Maggie Tullus Oliver. And I said, Madam Secretary, do you concur with the ACLU, meaning that video where it says, as long as the city provides mask, it's okay? She says, hi, Mr. Mayor, yes, and we have supplied all the clerks with masks for those who enter the polling location without one. What's harder is whether the poll officials can turn someone away who refuses. That's the challenge. So we're just saying you want, you know, into the building. Now, I will tell you this, and, and I think I made a comment to someone who emailed me. Okay, so let's say you, you come into the building, you're wearing a mask, you go into the, to the voting area, and you take off the mask, because you want to put your glasses on, and it's in a little cubicle. There's, I don't, I don't see a problem with that, because we're going to clean that cubicle after they leave, you know, after they take the, the mask off, see, put their glasses on, see who's on the ballot. And then, and they finish, they put their mask on and take off. So we technically really didn't stop them. I mean, they didn't really have to wear the mask while they're voting. We just want them, as they're coming in, and preferably as they're leaving. And then if they didn't want to do it as they're leaving, what can we do? Tell them they have to leave, and then they leave anyways. So, you know, the, that, that's really the way I look at it. But I, I will tell you, I just got the text right now from the Secretary of State, and so fortunately, she answered me pretty quick. So.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And again, what exactly did Maggie say? Maggie Tullus Oliver say? What were her words?
Okay, so, and, and, and you were kind enough to allow me to send the video to you this morning, the one from KVIA. And it says, and I just asked her, do you concur with the ACLU? In that video where it said, yes, it's okay, as long as the city provides a mask. And she said, yes, and we have supplied all the clerks with masks for those who enter the polling location without one. What's harder is whether the poll officials can turn someone away who refuses. That's the challenge. So.
ACLU said, did the ACLU say that, or did she say that?
No, she said that. That's what she said to me. I, I sent her the video, the one where on KVIA, they reached out to the ACLU, and they, they actually said it was okay, as long as there are masks for people to wear. Because what they were afraid of is someone's walking up, they don't know anything about the requirement, they didn't bring their mask, and then they, and they say, oh, well, you can't go in because you don't have a mask. And so as long as we have one, and they put it on, and they go in, vote, and then they leave. But they can keep the mask, too.
Okay. It's still, it's a little bit iffy, but it, you know, I, I think that nobody really knows it's, you know, we've never been in a situation like this. But, you know, for all of you who, you know, for all of you, I would recommend you read the book by Ari, by Ari Berman. The title of the book is Give Us the Ballot. And it shows how, you know, the, the work, the civil rights work that everybody did, working on the Fifteenth Amendment that passed after the Civil War. It really gives you a good idea of, and this book was published in 2016, right after the Voting Rights Act was pretty much gutted by the Supreme Court, Section Five at least. But it gives you a good idea as to, not a good idea, a very excellent, in-depth, historical perspective of how hard it's been for certain populations to vote at times because of the disenfranchisement issue. So I, I would recommend that you all, you all read it when you have some time. I know everybody's busy, but it's a good read. And, you know, and I, Martin Luther King, it really, when you look at the big picture, that's, that's pretty much why he lost his life. And John Lewis almost lost his life on March 7th, on Bloody Sunday, 1965. So it's very, very interesting. So just want to share that with you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your getting that, and I'm glad that Maggie reached out to you. Thank you all.
Looks like Jennifer, did you have another comment, Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to point out that the, the definition as, that will be in the proclamation for a face covering is very, very broad. It is not specific to a certain type of mask. And the reason for that is so that anybody can use anything to cover their face. It's defined as a covering made of cloth, fabric, or other soft permeable material without holes that covers the nose and mouth and surrounding.
Uh-oh, we lost Jennifer, or I lost connection. Can't hear me?
We can hear you, Mayor.
Jennifer's connection's off because she, it's frozen. Her frame is frozen.
You sure you didn't do that, Counselor Flores? You didn't?
Yeah, I did, I did. I want to gag her.
I think, I think I overheard you saying you learned how to do some stuff like that.
Yeah, I did. I'm a techie. Anyone can tell you I'm a techie. No, I, no, she's still frozen.
Okay, well, we'll come back to her, and we'll go to Counselor Batista Stube. Looks like you have a question.
No, thank you, Mayor. More of just a comment on this. You know, I, I know this can be very difficult, but we do have, you know, a kind of safety and sanitation requirements in our lives, you know, everything from wearing pants to different types of things. When we go out in public, it's for not only our safety, but for the safety of others when we're out there. And in all, it is a change, it is an adjustment, but masks are now one of those types of items. It's for the safety and sanitation, not only for ourselves, but for others. And it is hard to adapt and adjust. And I do want to make sure that we are providing masks to communities who might not have them. And also, like Attorney Vega Brown was saying, the definition is very, very broad, so that people can use whatever they have around them. But we know that they help and work. And we do, as a society, need to have some of those things in order for others, too, for their, like I said, safety and sanitation. And masks are another portion that we have to include in our lives now, that we have this new element in. And it's going to be so important, and I keep saying it with the three things, it's our physical health, our mental health, and our economic health. It is going to be a balance, and we need to be able to use all the tools that we have at our disposal to make sure that we can progress and move on, and return to our lives in, it will look different, but in a more normal way, in fashion, so we can hang out more later and things like that, you know. And so I know it's hard, and there are going to be situations and areas, like at the City Hall for voting, where it seems, you know, you want to protect rights and voting rights, and I think that's absolutely critical. But there are just those safety sanitation concerns. And so I, I'm glad that we're offering the masks. We have that broad definition, you know. And once again, the person, I offered the, the thought about the cards, just as a way of somebody who doesn't want to verbalize. It's just another tool. Doesn't have to be the only reason or way that somebody can disclose that they can't have a mask on, but it's just another tool if they don't want to verbalize it. You know, some people just don't like talking about those things. So doesn't have to be the only way, just another tool at the disposal of the person. So, you know, Mayor, I, I am in agreement with your emergency proclamation. I think that as we move forward, we have to balance these items, and I'm glad to see that we're adding component at the state level and at the city level as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Bencomo? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Counselor, Mayor Protam Gondala, and then Counselor Bencomo.
Thanks, Mayor. I too am in agreement with the emergency proclamation. I think that's important. I'm, I am concerned, because as you know, the system, and that is working with our county clerk's office, and Christine Rivera, and the people that they have at the polling, I don't want there to be this debate or any conflict about this. And so I'm hoping that we're training up our people, that Christine is on, on site and or by phone call, and that, so that we limit that kind of, of conflict, for sure. I absolutely agree that this is, for me, voting and the ability to do so is sacred. And we want to continue to influence, to have people come and vote. But, but really, we've, we've tried to, to say absentee, you know, go for the absentee ballot, there's still time. And I, I think it's important to, to say that. I do agree that rather than it being a resolution, that it needs to be an ordinance. I think that's important. For me, it's about the safety and well-being, using science and data to support that. It's all about trying to open up in the most responsible way. And I see that, again, according to Dr. Landin, is social distancing is most important, but this face covering is another tool, the toolbox to include the whole idea of hand washing and the wiping down. I think that's all very important elements to this. And, and so I don't want to have to take a few steps forward and then only to take back. And, and again, up until recently, as of last night, I was very concerned with our numbers, and this idea of coordinating and collaborating with the county, to ensure that our numbers continue to go down. And so nice to hear the data essentially right off the, hot off the press with the decrease, whatever that number was. What was it, 1.13 or something that Landin, Dr. Landin?
1.7, 1.17 from 1.33 the day before.
Right, right. So we want to continue to do that. And so anything that we can do, and I like the idea, the, the recommendations made by Chief Gallagher about the big box. I think that's, that's super important as, as we continue to navigate this, is, is reducing the numbers of people that don't have the masks. And, and, and the numbers that, it, it's, it's those folks that are, those companies that are, have, have, have been a challenge for us, and probably continue to be a challenge for law enforcement and state police. So that's, that's really all I have to say, Mayor. Again, I think a robust education campaign is super important. I like the strategy that Chief Gallagher spoke to is men, compliance, right, looking for voluntary compliance. We want to continue, continue to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And a quick shout out, I don't think she's still on, but Jennifer, David Maestas, Chief Gallagher, for the team to think this out and, and move forward with a city directive instead of the state, because it gives more control to the city and then allows the chief and, and his department to help regulate it and let us do it our way. And then in recognizing how the council feels about, you know, being too heavy-handed, because once it's in a different department, we have no control. Counselor Bencomo?
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Barbara, and Jennifer and David, for all the research and the work you put in front of us. I think it was really smart to not present something today until we heard from the formal governor's orders. I, honestly, I, I will be supporting the mayor's extension, 14-day extension. I agree with Mayor Protam about the need for an ordinance. And I would like to, and I, I, you know, I hear Chief Gallagher and this balance of, you know, increasing property crime. But, you know, the truth is, is that we just live, we're living in crazy times. And so I would like to hear strategies and a plan for how we would, how we could potentially enforce this that still prioritizes voluntary compliance and, and, you know, that, that centers the safety of our officers, for sure. But I do think it's important, you know, I, I also very much think I am a fierce advocate for voting rights. I, much of my private life is, is dedicated around this. And I've taken a, a different perspective than my colleague, Counselor Flores. You know, I think it's interesting that those who are historically marginalized from the ballot box are similarly those who are being disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. It's people of color, it's poor folks that are hugely being impacted by this disease. And as And as we move forward, I am making this decisions with a public lens health, first and foremost, because that's what we need to do in the middle of a global pandemic. And I think asking people to wear masks in all city facilities is an extension of, of frankly, protecting peoples, especially those historically marginalized communities. I think it's simply asking, asking everyone to, to wear face masks is an extension of that. I don't see those two things being in direct tension with each other. In fact, I see them working closely with each other. I, I'm, you know, I continue to be really concerned about big box stores. And I'm not entirely sure I'm seeing a lot of metering. So I would like to see more language in however we move forward with face coverings that also ensures, that we're also reminding, right? Businesses that metering needs to happen, that if you're going to, you know, if you're allowed to open up to a certain percentage, that you are enforcing strong metering guidelines in your place of business to protect yourself, your employees, and your customers. You know, and, and I just, honestly, I want to know, this whole idea of civil liberties, as a person of color in this country, trust me, I know what it's like to have civil liberties threatened. And being asked to wear a mask in a public space during the middle of a global pandemic is simply not that. So I feel really strongly about that. I think we need to take every single precaution we can to protect our neighbors, to protect each other, so that we can come out of this much sooner and much stronger. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Jennifer, are you there? I still don't see you. I didn't know if you wanted to have any closing comments. And I think Counselor Flores was going to apologize for freezing you.
What?
No, for freezing her. No, I guess she's not there. Okay, well, great. Well, thank you. Counselor Flores, you have another closing comment?
Yes, I, I just want to say, with all due respect, Counselor Bencomo, the civil, voting rights is, you know, is, is within the, you know, the bigger scope of, of voting rights, excuse me, of civil rights. But I don't fail to see how important this issue is. I don't fail to see that at all. So for all of, you know, the, the voting rights issue is just very near and dear to me. And I, and I just wanted you to know, I think that in one way or another, some, all, you know, most of us of color, those of us who are women, those of us who are, you know, LGBTQ, are, have all, you know, I think we've all had experiences of being marginalized or mistreated or whatever. So I just want to make it clear that this isn't just a flippant, you know, raising, you know, this, as I, and I preface it by saying, I've always supported everything the mayor has come forth with. And everything that everybody has said makes a lot of sense to me. But I'm just saying, when you're, when you're weighing it against the voting rights, my voting rights, and I agree with everything that Counselor Abeta Stuvi has said. I agree with everything that everybody has said. And I respect everybody's perspective. I just want you to understand mine. And mine is that I feel very strongly about voting rights. Am I going to vote against the mayor's, the proclamation or the ordinance? No. And after all that's been discussed and everything being weighed, and I'm glad that Maggie Tullus Oliver contacted the mayor, that is probably what, you know, makes me supportive of the measure. But I'm just saying, I don't know what the ACLU forwarded to the mayor or what the, if the ACLU sent anything. But yes, these are, these are desperate times, so we have to take desperate measures. And one of them, it's desperation, you know, we want to stay alive. So, but, you know, I do anticipate, I know that when I proposed that we have a curfew and the mayor, you know, gave me pushback on that, fine, you know, it's his prerogative. But, you know, one of the issues, one of the concerns he had was that, you know, there was going to be, you know, rioting and people, you know, holding all sorts of demonstrations if we had a curfew. And I'm not saying it's going to do that, that's going to happen. But anytime there's any kind of restrictive measure that's taken, any kind of restrictive measure, people will be out there. But I do appreciate everybody's comments. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. And I know it's just a matter of time that you're going to come up with something that I'll be supportive of.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I think we need, I just, I think it's important to reframe this. It's not a restrictive measure, it's a protective measure. I just think it's an important reframe to make.
No problem. Okay, so David Maestas, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor, just one final note. I wanted to let council and the mayor know that Jennifer was not able to get her computer to reboot. Although you were asking for her to get back on, she couldn't. She was trying, though. And then I don't, I think, I have to apologize, we failed to mention that we will have additional masks on hand at City Hall for the voting. So there, there were some questions about that. We do have the plan to have them on hand so that if somebody shows up and they don't have a mask, we do have them available. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Counselor Flores, what, what happened is Kate Berry from Channel 7, she contacted ACLU and, and got a response from them and a video response as one. And so she put together a segment, a TV segment. And so that's, that was the video that I sent to the Secretary of State to let her watch it. And I just said, do you concur with the ACLU's position? Which basically said, the gentleman that was on the video said that as long as the city provides face masks for a voter who, who comes to the City Hall and doesn't have one, he says, I'm okay with it. So that's what I sent to her. And so I, I never communicated with the ACLU.
The question still remains, Mr. Mayor, that if they refuse to wear a mask, they will not be allowed to vote. That's what's going to.
No, no, they won't be allowed to come into City Hall.
If they go to City Hall.
They won't be allowed to go into City Hall.
They won't? They won't be allowed to go into City Hall where they intend to go, to go vote? So they won't be able to vote?
And that's what I said, wear your mask, go inside the cubicle, take your mask off, vote, and put it back on and leave. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. I appreciate everybody. Thank you for, for, for this. And looks like we'll go ahead and ask for a motion a second to adjourn. Oh, oh, before we forget. And thank you, Barbara DeLeon, for your work on that as well. I inadvertently, when I was mentioning the chief and Jennifer and David, I apologize. You did a fantastic job and I know you worked hard to get this done before our meeting. So thank you, Barbara. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Flores, second, Mayor Protam Gondala, that we adjourn, all those favors signified by saying aye, aye. We're adjourned, it's 1:08 PM. Thank you.